There she is. All right. Thank you for joining us. So we would like to swear in our fourth new city councillor or for a two-year term for councillor Tezdale.
I, oh, you want me to start?
Yeah, I'll do it. I, Michelle Tezdale.
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand. Swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The state of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
The state of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
And then I will faithfully perform the duties of Detroit City Councillor.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Detroit City Councillor.
Congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Councillor Tezdale. Thank you for joining us. We'll now have a city council roll call and I will start with Greg Shepherd.
Greg Shepherd, Street Commissioner.
Eric Page.
Eric Page, Parks Commissioner.
Tim Luke.
Tim Luke.
Jim Trett.
Jim Trett, emergency preparedness.
Michelle Tezdale.
Michelle Tezdale.
John Manthe.
John Manthe, Water Commissioner.
And Shelley Ingle, Building Commissioner and Council President. And who have I missed?
Nobody.
Nobody. Good. At this time, it is my pleasure to take nominations and appoint our mayor.
I nominate Kim Trett.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Councillor Manthe, thank you. And we were seconded by Luke, Tim Luke, thank you. Do we have any other members of the council that are eligible that would like to be nominated? Hearing none. Jim Trett has been nominated as mayor. Therefore, we will, we do not, I guess we do, we need to take a vote. All city councillors who will like to, sorry, vote for Jim Trett as mayor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstaining, please indicate. Hearing none. I am pleased to announce that Jim Trett will be the mayor of the city of Detroit for the following year. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
And I will now turn it over to Mayor Trett.
Well, first of all, I think Kelly has to do something else. Word in there too.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Kelly.
I, James R. Trett. Swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States. State of Oregon and the city of Detroit. And that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of the city of Detroit. Well, thank you, everyone. I think.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
So moving along, I guess now nominations are open for council president. To have nominations. You can't hear anybody. Anybody?
I would nominate Shelley Ingle for council president.
Have Eric Page nominating.
Oh, you guys, I'm, I'm sorry. I've had it on mute. John Manthe nominated Eric Page for councillor or for president.
Okay, so nomination of Eric Page and, Eric, are you going to nominate Shelley?
Well, I did.
And if we have Shelley Ingle nominated. Okay, any further nominations? Any discussion?
I'll second.
Second what?
Second what? Both? Do I have a motion to know close nominations?
I make a motion to close nominations.
That motion, Councillor Manthe, to close nominations, second. Councillor Shepherd?
I'll second.
Okay. Do you either can, you guys want to say something? Shelley, well, starting with you.
I, I was extraordinarily honored and had the privilege of serving as council president in the past. And it's, I have really enjoyed it and really gained a lot of knowledge and have been very honored to serve at this, in this role.
Okay, and you've done a fine job.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm honored by the nomination. It's a busy, busy upcoming year. I, I, I would have a tendency to believe that, at least for the time being, somebody that's already served in that capacity might keep our wheels turning possibly more smoothly this year. I'd be happy to serve in an alternative, but Shelley knows, knows the procedure on, on playing the president role. And I think for the moment with the disaster period that we're in, we, we should just continue on with that path. But thank you for that nomination.
Any further discussion? What we'll have to do, I think, is, okay, all those in favor of councillor Ingle being selected to the position of council president, signify by saying, how about we have to raise our hands so we can see it because this could be really confusing on, on this board. So everybody in favor of councillor Ingle, raise your right hand, please.
Aye.
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 One, two, three, four, five. And I can't, okay, councillor Page, all those in favor. Okay, we have one for councillor Shepherd. Okay, that being the case, councillor Ingle is elected to president of the council. And Kelly?
Yes.
Unmute yourself this time.
I'm, I'm unmuted.
Okay.
Okay, Shelley, I, Shelley Ingle.
I, Shelley Ingle.
Swear that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States.
Swear that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States.
The state of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
The state of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of president.
And that I will, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of president.
Of the council, the city of Detroit.
Of the council of the city of Detroit.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Okay. Appointment of council commissions. Usually what we do, what we've done in the past is just ask people if they want it. Current councillors, if they want to keep their commission and then plug in. I would like to, without, or with, without dissent from anyone, like, we currently have a position that was councillor-at-large. I would like to, like I said, sorry?
Jim?
Yes.
Yeah, this is John. Before you, before you make these things, I got a little announcement I'd like to make. As of tonight at midnight, I be, will be resigning my position. I'm a city councillor. So you can do whatever you need to do now.
Okay. So we'll look for that in writing, John.
I will. I'll get it to Kelly.
Yeah. So what I would like to do is take that position that we kind of made a, an at-large position and create the commissioner of tourism, I think, with what has been going on in the last several months, that we need to, as a city, address the fact that we do understand the value of tourism to the city. And, and that to me would be a huge position right now, coming into it. So without dissent, I would change the commissioner-at-large position to the commissioner on, on tourism at this point. Is there any discussion or problem with that?
I think that's a very, very good call, Jim. I, I couldn't agree more. That's an area that's going to need really a, 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 a good hand at what's going on and providing a communication to the rest of the world that comes to visit to Detroit and make sure we don't upset our apple cart. And I, that's an important thing for us to, to be managing. So good call from my perspective.
I would agree with that too, Jim. Great, thank you.
Mayor Trett, Mayor Trett, this is Michelle Tezdale. I, I agree with that. I think it's a great idea. I also think that with this unusual time, that may be a reworking of how we do the commissioners, considering the whole town burnt down and we need some serious expertise on the, on the, as the commissioners and how, so instead of choosing the same ones because they did it last year, maybe whoever has the most experience on some of these to rework it. I, I was just a thought I had by looking at what we've, all, all the ones we have to replace or change.
Okay. To do that, we'd have to take some time and figure out who, who has those qualifications for which position. I'm open for, what I would like to do maybe tonight, just so we get this taken care of tonight and maybe address it. Address it, maybe. Because we have a call agenda tonight and our, we're limited on time because of the format we're in. Could we just announce positions tonight, put people there and then address it at a later date? Does that sound fair?
I don't understand if, how could that change if, once announced, can they be changed?
I believe so. If that's supposed to be, I'm supposed to make those appointments with council consent. So if I think of next month, for example, if we wanted to readdress it, we can do that. Or we have to put this whole thing off till next month. I just don't see how we can make those kinds of decisions. Who wants what position tonight and still with everything else we have on, on the agenda, get through it in the time allotted by the, by the Zoom people. And if you've never been in one of these meetings, my light goes off because it's on a timer. So you see me having these breakdance moments.
I think it'd be worth spending a few minutes for discussion instead of just going over it, Jim, but just my, my opinion.
Discussion?
Jim, I make a motion that we table this discussion till next month where we have more time and more information and more ability to make educated decisions.
Do you have a motion to table?
I second that.
Appointment of the council members, or appointment of commissioners to the February meeting, second councillor Manthe. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you say, who, who said?
We're going to do this.
Who was opposed, please? Michelle and Tim.
Opposed.
Tim Luke.
Okay, Michelle and Tim, okay. Thank you.
And was everybody else in aye? I couldn't quite. Let's do a roll call. Councillor Ingle, how do you vote?
I vote to table it till next month.
Okay, you vote aye. Councillor Page?
Aye.
Councillor Luke?
Nay.
Councillor Shepherd?
Nay.
And councillor Tezdale?
Nay.
Councillor, Mayor Trett votes aye. What's the count, Kelly?
Three to, uh, three to.
Did John vote?
Did you vote, John?
Yes, nay.
You voted nay? Okay.
Yes.
So you want the decision made tonight?
You want the decision made tonight?
Oh, no, I, I've got it backwards. No, I, I'm voting for, go ahead and send it to next month.
Okay, so we have Shep, councillors, Shep, Shepherd, councillor Tezdale, Tezdale and councillor Luke as nay.
Okay, so it passes for the tree. We'll table till next month. And I'm sure, I really do want who wants what position and maybe some reasons why that, so we can strip that out to council members and make those next month. Okay?
Okay.
Appointment of personnel review board members by the mayor with consent of council. Basically, we have three positions open because councillor Larson Hills is now an ex-member and councillor Manthe will be later today. So the review board, basically, their, their goal, their, their role is if a city employee receives some kind of discipline that they don't agree with, goes to the, they can appeal to the personnel review board for a decision. If they don't like the decision of the personnel review board, then it is decided by, this is by, by the mayor. So is there anybody interested in serving on the personnel review board? We need three people.
I would like to.
Tim Luke? Yeah, Tim Luke, councillor Luke. Anybody else?
I could be an alternate, if that's okay, if you guys get enough.
We do have a position as an alternate.
The reason why this is very important, part, it, it, it is, has to do with, you know, employees, but it, if there is, is an issue. But the Personnel Manual has not been updated. And it needs to be, so that needs to be worked on. It's just, it just keeps getting pushed aside and we don't have, you know. So it, that, that's another thing that needs to be addressed as well, not just employee issues or whatnot.
We have a resource with, through the council of governments to help with that.
We've already, Tim, we already have all that information from them. We just need to go through it and add, add some things that, that or change some things. Just needs to be gone through so we can get it done and approved.
Okay.
Yeah. Then we can't do that with just one person.
I need two, two, two more people to step up and I don't, I understand from our attorney, it shouldn't be me because I'm the step beyond that.
Correct.
Because I tried that once.
I heard that councillor Tezdale said that she'd be willing to serve.
Alternate, though.
Okay, not, not actually on the board, okay.
Well, if you guys want to think about it and wait till next month, that's fine, I guess.
We'll pass that along to next month then.
Okay.
Appointment of the alternate personnel review board member without dissent will make Michelle Tezdale the alternate. Adoption.
I'm happy to give that up.
Okay. Two point seven, adoption of resolution, you may have a typo on your, on your agenda. It's Resolution 613 by the city council and appointment of a planning commissioner by mayor with approval of the majority in the council. Currently on the council is Dino, Planning Commissioner, I'm sorry, Dean O'Donnell, Kevin Hills, Elaine DeGeorge and Todd Smith. Adoption of Resolution 613 would increase the size of the commission from five to seven. It has been seven in the past. The reason for, for expanding it at this point is partly because of the large number plan, things, the planning commission is not going to be involved with it for the next several years. Maybe help spread some of that, books load out. And we also, as it turns out, have, this didn't, isn't the driving force here, but we do have three very qualified people who have experience they bring to the table that would, would have applied to be on the commission. And with everything else, that would be, we could just add them to that council and make a commission of seven. So the first thing, first thing we have to do is address Resolution 613. I do have to read it for the record. So I'll go as fast as we can. Resolution number 613, a resolution amending ordinance number 178, section two, a municipal code, section 2.20.020 relating to the charter change affecting membership and establishing criteria and refuting Resolution number 511. Whereas the city, Detroit City Council wishes to amend ordinance 178, section two, establishing a city planning commission which states the commission shall consist of seven members who are not officials or employees of the city. Whereas the city of Detroit adopted Resolution number 511 on December 11th, 2012, to amend ordinance 178, section two relating to membership and residency requirements to comply with ballot measure 24-350 on December 4th, 2012, adopting a new charter of modifying residency and office holding requirements. The change is reflected in section 2.20.020 of the Detroit Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Detroit finds it necessary to amend the statement that the planning commission shall consist of three primary resident members and two non-primary residents, members who are not officials or employees of the city, to four primary resident members and three non-primary resident members who are not officials or employees of the city due to a need for more volunteers to expedite the rebuilding of the city of Detroit due to the Beechey Creek and Lionshead wildfires that occurred September 8th, 2020. Be hereby resolved as follows. Organants number 178, section two shall be amended to read. The commission consists of seven members who are not officials or employees of the city. Four members must be primary residents of the city who meet the charter residency requirement. And three members may be non-primary residents of the city who meet the charter residency requirements. Change will be reflected in section 2.20.020 of the Detroit Municipal Code passed by the common council of the city of Detroit, Marion County, Marion County, Oregon on this 12th day of January 2021. So that's the, that's the resolution read for the record. Hopefully you have seen it. Do I have a motion, first of all?
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution number 613.
Have a motion councillor Page to adopt Resolution 613, second councillor Luke, discussion.
Oh, second Manthe, I'm sorry. It was John Manthe second.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
I did too. We did it.
Okay. All right.
So do we have any discussion here?
No, I think it's a great idea. I was going to suggest that too, so I think.
Hey, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. So, I can't read with the lights out.
There you go.
This is going to be fun. So I guess the first thing we should do here is could I have a motion to reappoint Dean O'Donnell, Kevin Hills, Elaine DeGeorge? And, well, they're already on the council. I don't think we have to, yeah, we need to reappoint them and Todd Smith. So I go have a motion to reappoint Dean O'Donnell, Kevin Hills, Elaine DeGeorge and Todd Smith to the planning commission.
I make a motion, we appoint all four planning commissioners back to planning commission.
Motion councillor Page to reappoint Dean O'Donnell, Kevin Hills, Elaine DeGeorge and Todd Smith to planning commission, second?
Second.
Second, who was that? I'm sorry.
Michelle.
Michelle, thank you. Councillor Tezdale, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. All right, we have before us three applications to be appointed to the city, to the city planning commission. Cameron Cameron, full-time resident, lives at 425 Buster Road West in Detroit, was county commissioner. He's got special qualification, a citizen with interest on the future of Detroit, educational background, bachelor of science, business, marketing and what's you, eighty. Has been a state representative since 2005 to 2014. Marion County Commissioner to President and Oregon State Fair Council Board Member. So do I have a motion for the council?
I make a motion, we accept Kevin Cameron onto the planning commission.
Motion councillor Page to appoint Kevin Cameron to the, to the city planning commission.
Second.
Second councillor Tezdale, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have application from Davis Evenson, part-time. I'm just going to read the first paragraph. I'm interested in being a member of the Detroit Planning Commission and ask that you consider me for the current open seats. I'm no stranger to Detroit because I have been coming to this beautiful city since I was a young child. My father grew up in Idana and my great-grandfather and grandfather worked on the Idana lumber, at the Idana lumber company. Tracy and I started visiting Detroit in 1991 when we first started dating. We were camper side crews and all that. He is a, he is in construction, so he has experienced that way. Do I have a motion on Davis Evenson?
I make a, go ahead, Tim.
I motion to accept Davis Evenson.
That motion councillor Luke to accept appointment, Davis Evenson of the city of Detroit planning council. Second councillor Page, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, same sign? Finally, application Gina Aldrich, I never say her name right, I apologize for that. Thirty years of public safety and government experience, negotiation experience, eight-year city councillor experience, six-year school board member, ability to listen, review and understand planning and other materials, a passion to serve the community, educational background, associate degree in communications, American Community College, bachelor's degree in business management, University of Phoenix and an Oregon real estate license. Do I have a motion for Gina Aldrich?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Gina Aldrich to the planning commission.
I second that.
Motion councillor Tezdale and second councillor Page.
Kind of a tie there.
Yeah, yeah, was a tie with councillor Shepherd to appoint Gina Aldrich to the city of Detroit planning commission special.
I think she'd be a great, I think Gina would be a great addition to the planning commission. She had a pretty impressive resume.
Agreed.
And she did apply back in July.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so.
Do you need to take an oath of office, Jim?
Uh, yeah. So, do we have?
Where's Kevin?
Do we have councillor, Kevin Cameron on the line?
I'm here.
Okay. Repeat after me. Aye, Kevin Cameron.
Aye, aye, Kevin Cameron.
Swear that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States.
Swear that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States.
State of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
State of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Detroit Planning Commissioner.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Detroit Planning Commissioner to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome aboard, Commissioner Cameron. Davis Evenson, are you online?
I'm here.
Good.
Uh, here we go. Repeat after me, Davis. I, Davis Evenson.
I, Davis Evenson.
Swear that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States.
Swear to, can you repeat that? You're cut out.
Swear to, can you repeat that? You're cut out.
Swear that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States.
Swear to support the constitution and the laws of the United States.
The state of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
State of Oregon and city of Detroit.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Detroit Planning Commissioner.
And will faithfully support the duties of a Detroit Planning Commissioner.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And Gina, Gina, are you on board?
She was. She's not there.
Yes, I'm here.
Well, there you are.
Are? Okay. Oh, there you are.
Hello.
Hi. Okay. Repeat after me. I, Gina Aldrich.
I, Gina Aldrich.
Swear that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States.
Swear that I will support the constitution and the laws of the United States.
The state of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
The state of Oregon and the city of Detroit.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Detroit Planning Commissioner.
And I will faithfully support the duty of the Detroit Planning Commissioner.
Thank you. Congratulations, Gina.
Congratulations, all of you, and thank you so much for stepping up at a pretty critical time in Detroit's history. I'm moving along, three-point-old declaration of conflict of interest and ex parte contact and counselors. Moving along, announcements. This is a agenda item for items not on the agenda, but relevant to city business may be discussed by the council at this meeting. Citizens are encouraged to attend all meetings of city council and ensure that they remain informed. Agenda items may be moved back if a public hearing is scheduled. Any announcements to make at this point? Okay. U.S. bank accounts, signature cards have to be signed by the new counselors. So, Tim and Michelle, we'll have to get you those, but just so you can sign checks. We do currently have enough to sign. It's all counselors are able to sign them. But we can't let you do it until you get those cards signed. So I tell you what they have to come in for that.
Yes, and we'll be here until Thursday through Thursday, and then we'll be in Dayton on Friday.
Yeah, I have to come to Salem. I have to come to Salem Thursday for.
Okay.
I can do that in one.
Okay.
Will that work for you, Michelle, somewhere?
Yes, yeah, definitely.
Great, thank you. Approval of minutes, city council regular meeting of December eighth, twenty twenty. People had a chance to look at them. And if so, are there any? Do I, is there any corrections?
I would make a motion, Jim, that we approve the city council regular meeting of December eighth, twenty twenty, and special session of December twenty-two, twenty twenty.
Okay. Well, we do that, and I have a motion, Counselor Page, to accept the minutes of the regular council meeting on Tuesday, December eighth, twenty twenty, and the special session minutes of the special session of Tuesday, December twenty-second. Does anybody have any corrections or comments on that, on those two minutes?
Nope.
Sorry? Okay, hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Abstentions, motion passes unanimously.
Excuse me, did someone second that or did I miss that?
Who did I get? I thought I had a second.
I'll second it.
Counselor Engel. I suppose we should remove our vote just to make sure. I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Approval of bills payable for the current month.
I make a motion. We pay the bills for the current month.
Have a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second Counselor Engel.
Second, motion counsel page, second counsel Engel, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 And those opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes unanimously. Just for information, I'm gonna check a lot of organization I belong to create what's called the consent calendar. I need to either be put on that, we would go through and discuss them as we usually do. But it would only be one vote to approve the consent calendar, if that would be okay with everybody. Go from there. Okay, public hearings, decide the following request. Proposal is for a Class C variance in section two point two point four B one of the Detroit Development Code to allow for a nine-foot setback or a fifteen-foot setback is required. At this time, I will open the public hearing for city council. Commissioner Hills. Kevin, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, you have to open up your, the planning commission, public hearing.
The planning commission's public hearing is open at seven twenty-four P M.
And call for a planning commission roll call.
Have a roll call? The planning commission?
Yeah.
Lady George here.
Dean, are you still here? Maybe just the two of us.
Uh, Dean's not here? Okay.
No.
Michelle was there.
I think it's just the two of us, Jim.
I don't think that's a quorum, is it?
No.
Michelle was there before. Where did Dean go?
Didn't you guys just vote in Davis Evenson and?
They have not reviewed the the information though, Tim.
Yeah. Yeah.
We did not have.
Well, we, we, we were, I think Davis and I were on the planning commission meeting, listening. This is Commissioner Cameron. But it wasn't, wasn't it a recommendation? Didn't it? I understood that the planning commission made a recommendation to the council. Does the council just take the recommendation? And act on it? Yeah. You don't need, you don't, yeah, you don't need it. I, I don't understand that. Why would you need another public hearing of the planning commission? They held that tonight.
The planning commission held a hearing and the city council, based on the fact that they made a decision and have a recommendation to the council to accept the staff report. Hi, McCray Carmichael Midwill, Lema Valley Council of Government Planner for the city of Detroit. Sorry, forgot introducing myself. They have made a recommendation, and so there's now city council. The way the code works, the council holds a hearing and can accept planning commission's recommendation, but planning commission is not a part of this hearing now. Mayor try it.
So I think we'd be okay to go continue.
Yes.
Okay.
And I might add, there's been a, the, the internet is, I just called Dean, there's a, the internet is bouncing on and off. We're both in West Salem and I'm running on a hotspot now. But I think this storm is causing connections to drift in and drift out. So we may have people that are gonna be out that don't intend to be out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think we can continue from what I'm hearing. So, Travis, could we have the staff report, please? Or McCray, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, I'm gonna first need to read in just the typical statements, public hearing process. So this is a Class C variance requesting the reduction of a front yard setback from fifteen feet to nine feet in the single-family residential zone at one-ten Melbore Court. The applicable criteria upon which this case will be decided are found in the Detroit Development Code, section two point one five and section five point one. This specific criteria are summarized in the staff report and will be reviewed during this hearing. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which you believe to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Boards of Appeal based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval will allow the decision makers to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will proceed with the staff report, followed by the applicant and in those of support in the application. All those who oppose that the application will then be allowed to speak, followed by those with general comments neither for or against. The council or staff may question the applicant and those who testified, the applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut the testimony or evidence. If you have any documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must be formally placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you would speak, you would email that information to myself or Kelly, the city recorder, to make sure it's evidenced and identified and placed in the record. Prior to the conclusion of our hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, it will be up to this body to determine if the hearing should be continued to a time and date certain, or if the record will be kept open for submission of written testimony. If the record is kept open, it will be a minimum of seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded to the applicant. And at this point, I would like to submit my staff report to the record for variance twenty twenty dash oh one dated January fifth, twenty twenty-one for variance to section two point two point four B one of the Detroit Development Code to allow for a nine-foot setback for the front yard adjacent to a street in a single-family zone where the standard is fifteen feet. We had notice. The applicant was received on December seventh. Staff reviewed and deemed the application complete on December eighteenth. Notice was sent to property owners within two hundred and fifty feet on December twenty-third twenty twenty, and the applicant posted notice on their property on December thirtieth, twenty twenty, as required by section four point one point five of the Detroit Development Code. At this point, planning commission met, had a hearing prior to this hearing and recommended to the city council that they adopt the findings in the staff report and approve the request for the variance. So with that, if there are questions that I can ask, I'd be happy to. The applicant is not here in this meeting. He notified me that he he wasn't going to be available, so.
Okay. So are there, is there, at this time, opponents who wish to testify on this issue? Hearing none. Are there any opponents who wish to testify on this issue? Hearing none. Is there any neutral testimony on this issue? Hearing none. Questions from the public? Hearing none. Questions from planning commission? Hearing none. Questions from city council?
I have something to bring out, since there was oversight. And that's why the mistake occurred where the Mr. Chad Gilliland had to pay because this, this mistake was not.
Michelle?
Yes.
Could I ask? We have a place down, just a couple down where we're supposed to, where we can discuss. This is for questions. Is that fair?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Questions from council? Hearing none. Applicant summary and rebuttal, and he's not with us. This time, I will close the public hearing for city council. Counselor Hill, Commissioner Hills? Get to close the public. You get to close your end of the public hearing also.
But you just had it.
Unmute yourself, Kevin.
He's unmute. He's muted.
Unmute.
Unmute. Yep, planning commission meeting is closed, seven thirty-three.
Okay. Now, discuss recommendations to city council. Counselor Tezdale.
I don't know how to use the right terminology for this because I'm not in construction and don't under, and haven't had to build a house there in Detroit. But there's oversight that happened on his application, and I'm concerned about the fee he had to pay because of this, because it went through. And as one, and I know that if this kept occurring, then the citizens would have to pay for the mistake. So I'm wondering if we could not charge him for the city of Detroit, the fee for the city of Detroit. I know the city doesn't have a lot of money, but this was an oversight on our part. So I just didn't want the citizen to have to pay for that. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but that was just my thought.
And I feel the same. Kelly, how much would that be? City part?
Well, we'd have to pay the city planner. That's that two thousand dollar deposit. You know, our fee is, is is a one hundred dollars, I believe. But it's, most of it goes to the, the city planner. And her, and her, what, what she with her, like she explained with her investigation in regards to this in the staff report. So that's what that deposit is for. The city engineer, I'm not sure, was the city engineer involved in this, McCray? Sometimes, no, not on this one. Okay.
No, they were sent notice of application, but no review was needed.
So most of that goes to the city government. McCray's work, it just depends on what that fee is. If the fee is under that two thousand dollars, then we reimburse Mr. Gilliland.
But we, I didn't know the, I didn't know that, I don't know the fee charges on each side of that. I haven't looked into that yet, so.
I'm, I'm not sure what the fee is either right now.
Dad stated that to do this process, to get this variance, he had to pay two checks, one for three hundred and seventy-five dollars, one for eighteen hundred and or three hundred and something, and one for eighteen hundred and seventy-five. It was over twenty-one, twenty-two hundred dollars. What part of that is for this hearing, for the, for the review, for the everything to rectify the mistake that was made by the reviewing of his plans? They gave, reviewed the plans, they stamped them, they gave him authorization to build, he went to build, and then they found out that they weren't to the code, which was not his fault. He, he gave.
Well, it, it, it's not, no, it's not his fault, Tim, but there are the, the, that's, it's the responsibility as well for the property owner to know what the development code is and the builder and whoever does the plans. But it generally was one of the staff's faults because they didn't catch that. And I, and I understand that, and I agree with that.
Yeah.
But it's a combination of things.
It is not their responsibility to know all those things. It's a responsibility to go through the process and that is in place in our government for us as professionals, the review boards and planning and so forth, to look those over and tell them if they are correct or not and to make any correction necessary, which they did to the letter of the law. And a mistake was made on the government's part to approve those, and the gentleman is now not only quite delayed, but has spent a ton of money on his contractor and everything else, and over two thousand dollars just for us to give him a variance that was our mistake or not his mistake. So I don't know how much of the money.
That's the city council's decision to make, not mine. Go ahead, McCray.
I would offer that the portion of the setback, there's probably about, you know, five square feet that is within the setback area of his portico. And he made the choice, you know, when he was in the field, when the inspector came out in the field. So let me, I'd like to back it up and give everyone kind of timeline. The applicant applied for a building permit in May of last year. He submitted his building permit. The city does a zoning review, and then we send our, the plans over. When I say we, that's the city, we send the plans over for Marion County for building permit review. His plans didn't depict the area where the portico was. It wasn't accurately represented. We didn't redline it. Alternatively, you know, in some situations, you might see a red line on all sorts of things, but in particular, in this case, zoning setbacks, you know, of fifteen feet. And so when the inspector, the building permit was issued, when the inspector came out, he notified the applicant, you're not meeting the fifteen-foot setback requirement. he notified the applicant, you're not meeting the 15-foot setback requirement, and you need to contact the cities. And he contacted us. We do have a variance process. We have three different variances. And there's a Class A variance that is an administrative process, and it's for a 10% deviation in the development standard. There's a Class B variance. They cost less, but the, but this, the 40% reduction in what the setback requirement would be is what causes. He, so, and a type three application requires a pre-application conference. So that was the first step. And he, he said, I understand that I could change my design right now, but I want it to, I want it to be like this. I, I want to go forward. Now, I'm not dismissing that the note that he could have easily, probably before he, you know, poured his foundation, could have set back further, and he doesn't deny that either. But there were junctions along the way where decisions, he could have made different choices, and he wanted to, he stopped construction that worked for him for a whole host of reasons, and he now, and he wanted to proceed with the variance application. Now that said, there's room for improvement with how we're going to be reviewing building permits moving forward for zoning setbacks and making sure that the information is clearly redlined, that plans are accurately drawn so that we see that setbacks are met, all these things. And this is, we're going to have a lot of activity over the next few years. So I appreciate the questions that you all are raising. So do people have questions just about how, how this variance got to you right now? And counselors?
Thank you, McCray. Counselor Page, and I would, I would concur that putting a little more careful pencil to it is, without question, falls back onto the city counties and the officials that do this on a daily basis. As far as absorbing tons of fault here from the city's standpoint, based on the reading of this that I did, and the position the property owner chose to move forward with, you know, if there's some mitigation we can afford to it, that's great. But at the same time, I think this, this issue is probably not as big as trying to get all of this money back at the numbers $2,000 that, you know, there, there was mitigating circumstances all the way around on this thing. Not that I'm saying I want to go beating up on the public, building new, new residences in Detroit by any means. We're going to be a lot more careful on it, I'm sure. But this, this doesn't seem to be anything we need to beat on too hard. Thank you.
Further discussion?
The reason that I was making a point of it is very important to establish a precedent at the very beginning of this. And one of the things that I ran on to be on this council was accountability and transparency and so forth. And although this homeowner could have made those changes, they were not easy changes, and they would have cost him more money than to proceed with this because his foundation was already formed and pouring when it was found out. So if I was him, I would have had to take it in the gut and spent two grand to make it too. But that's not right to make him do that, in my opinion, my professional and my personal opinion, and all my experience in building. I've had this situation happen to myself and other people. And, and we rely on our professionals in government who give us, as you all know, unbelievably stringent guidelines to stay within. And the fact that they didn't sharpen their red pencil is their fault. And that's just my professional and my personal opinion. And I just think we need to make it as easy as we can on this gentleman and, and take some of that responsibility and, and make sure that we cross our t's and dot our i's. And the professionals, the engineers, and their plan review people need to do their jobs better and it not be the responsibility of our constituents to have to pay anything cost them for, for those mistakes. That's just my opinion.
Well, we have a couple of things due here. One, do we want to approve the variance? And then I guess the second question is, do we, what do we do about the fee?
Jim, I would make a motion, we approve the variance.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve the variance.
And I would have seconded that.
I have a second, motion, Counselor Page, second, Counselor Luke, discussion on the All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Now I guess we should address the, the, the issue of the payment. Personally, I have mixed emotions here. I, I agree with, with everybody that if we made a mistake, I don't want, we should be on the hook for that. But I'm also now, after I hear McCray's comment of he, he kind of knew it and kept going anyway. I mean, it would seem to me that at that point, he should have been coming to council saying, well, what can we do here? Maybe then we could, so I really have some mixed emotions. Yes, we screwed up, but he allowed that, that to continue by saying, I don't care.
No, Jim, he didn't, he didn't do that. He, no, he screwed up, and he started, and he poured his foundation, and they didn't find it until he was pouring the foundation. So he was stuck. He was either tear his whole foundation and ruin thousands of dollars of time, labor, and material, or move forward. So it was the least path of resistance to move forward. But all in all, it was, it was the reviewer's mistake, not his.
Further discussion?
Jim, it seems to me that because this is Marion County, it's Marion County's decision whether they will refund the money or not.
I need to clarify, we had this discussion also with the planning commission. The fees that were, there are two different kinds of fees, right? There's the building permit fees, and we take in, we take in, the city takes in, Kelly's city recorder takes in that building permit, and then we send it to Marion County, and we have a contract with them. They do the building permit review, and then we pay for that service for a structural building permit review and for inspection. The fees, I think you all, the fees, the $365 for the pre-application as required of a type three Class C variant, a pre-application's required, a requirement of the development code. So there was that fee that he had to do. And then to proceed to the Class C variant is an $1,800 land use fee. So I believe you're discussing that. And that, I don't necessarily have your land use fees and resolutions. I don't know about your ability to suspend. What I could offer is our, you know, when all our time is filled out, I can bring back what the remaining amount is. So he, he made his application. We carried over the, from the pre-app, because for the pre-app, we actually, we, what staff will usually do in this situation, what we've done historically, is what we recently did for other pre-apps that are happening in Detroit, is we have a meeting similar to like this, a Zoom meeting with all the, you know, people involved, engineer, architect, landowner, and then we produce a staff report. In this case, we looked at it and we saw, this is a previous planner to me, but we saw the setback, where it fit in the, in the code, and said, the type of adjustment that's available to you is a Class C variant. And so he, so here are your options. You know, you could modify your design, or you can apply for the variance. That, that is the restrictions that staff like myself are operating in when we're working with applicants. And so he decided to proceed with that applicant. The, the way those fees go is you make that application fee, and it's a deposit. And then based on the amount of time that COG and the city recorder and essentially city engineer bill, the remaining balance is given back to the applicant.
Just to clarify, this was all about after they discovered that the setbacks that he was told were okay, his plans were approved. This was after that, and this is all about having to do a variance because of the mistake that was, that was overlooked, an oversight on his plan review. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be an accurate statement, that this, he became aware of this setback requirement in the field after his building permit had been issued. Yes.
That's what I wanted to clarify so that everybody understood that.
Yeah.
Decision forward was because he was in a, he was in a pickle based on a mistake and an oversight and, and not on his part. So thank you.
So I'm, I'm McCray, I'm still Eric Patcher. I'm still confused on what was the portion of this where the, the, either the map didn't agree with it, or the building plan didn't agree with it. What, there was, there's something in this that is indicating that there was, you know, something not completely in line, and then it changed at the, later on.
So in the field. So what he drew, what his plan showed, the level of detail, I haven't been able to see the actual building permit plans that were submitted, but I've seen electronic copies. What he showed wasn't accurate necessarily, his dimension from where his portico was to where the property line was. But what hap, what, what can happen in plan reviews like that would be someone, a staff member who's reviewing for zoning, redlining on that plan, you know, from the property line to this point of the building, there's going to be a 15-foot setback. And that wasn't done by the person who reviewed the plan.
Okay, that's, that's the point I was, I was looking for.
Yeah, that, yeah. So it's, it's hard. It's not like he showed on his plans. I'm very tired that he's not here. I don't, but I, I feel confident I can represent the topic, which him and I have talked a lot the past two months. He had, sorry, I am obviously like all this at home with humans, a little humans. But his plans did not show a nine-foot setback. You know, like that wasn't delineated, like he didn't come in showing that he was trying to build with a nine-foot setback. It just wasn't drawn very clearly and well to start with. So there's a question like, should we have allowed that to come in as part of the building permit as a starting point? And then past that, the next, even, even if we do accept, and, and this is a good conversation to think about, even if we do accept things that maybe aren't, you know, the, I don't want to say the most accurate, but definitely trying to afford people flexibility when they're bringing their building permits in, we can still redline plans.
So clarification for me, the clarification for me in this, this whole process is, is that when you have a structure that's getting seriously close to a property line setback one way or another, when this goes through its review, that section should have been redlined for, hey, we need to make sure this measurement is within where it should be. Point being, it didn't happen. So I'm, now I'm clear with that in the fact that at the end of the day, you know, there was a mistake that was made that probably was not brought forward. I mean, it's, there's not a lot of cause on his part. This, this is something that it should have been redlined because of the way it was laid out, and it wasn't. And so whatever can be given back to him probably is, is fair. You've answered me. Thank you.
McCray, I have a simple, simple question. Who approved the original setback on the plan? Was it, was it the city? Because I know I did not sign off on this, or was it the county?
It was the city.
Okay, I, yeah, I don't know who signed off on that.
Yeah.
And so if it was the city, then, then I would say perhaps the amount that we receive as a city, because many people don't realize, we only get a small percentage of those building fees. Most of it goes to the county, and then we get some of it ourselves. And so I would say the original permit, perhaps we could look at reimbursing them. But this seems to be a very complicated conversation, and we don't have all the numbers, we don't have all the facts. And so I would make a motion that we table this till next month because this is taking a very long time, and we don't have all the information in front of us. And if we could look at it again in February when we know everything, then I think we can make educated choices at that time.
Which was kind of where I was saying, because I'd like to see the numbers. Because I'm assuming that if we didn't get to the 2,000, he's going to get some of that back anyway. So personally, I, I feel a lot better making a decision when we have those numbers in front of us, so we know exactly what we're giving up. I have a tendency to agree if we screwed up. I get tired of, of the attitude from agencies and businesses of, if you screw up, shame on you. If we screw up, shame on you.
Then let's make a motion to...
I did make a motion.
So I have a motion to table it.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Second Counselor Tezdale. Discussion further. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Abstentions? Motion passes. We will readdress next month with the numbers. Thank you very much, everybody. Number nine, public hearing to decide upon the following request, review and emergency ordinance to allow for temporary housing provisions for residents impacted by the fires in September of 2020. So what we have here is the code relaxations we would like to implement, and, and a timeline for return, returning to the current codes as they sit now. I guess the concern a lot of us have is that people are going to start doing things, and then after a period of time when we think people should be getting back to what the code says, they're going to say no. So what we're, what we do want to work with people to make it easy for them to rebuild their home. So I'm going to pass this up to McCray to kind of talk about what we're doing here.
Okay. Well, thank you again, Mayor Trent, and counselors. This is legislative amendment 20-01. I'm sorry, you're going to hear me again repeat nuances of land use process. This is a legislative amendment for the Detroit Development Code for temporary provisions for recreational vehicle use area, vehicle use and accessory structures in the residential, commercial, and public use zones. Oregon land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of a public hearing. And this, again, is a public hearing. This is a type four land use application. The applicable criteria upon which this case will be decided are found in the Detroit Development Code, section 4.15. The specific criteria is summarized in the staff report and will be reviewed during the hearing. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria or the criteria in the plan or land use regulations to which you believe to apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions with sufficient specificity to allow the decision makers to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in certain court. The hearing will proceed with the staff report, followed by the applicant, in this case, there isn't one, and those in support of the application. All those opposed to this will be allowed to speak, followed by those with general comments, either for or against. The counselor staff can ask questions of those who testify. The applicant will be given an opportunity to discuss. And again, in this case, sorry, we don't have an applicant. If you have any documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must be formally placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email this to myself or Kelly, the city recorder. Prior to the conclusion of the hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding this. If such a request is made, it will be up to this body to determine if the hearing will continue to a time and certain date, or if the record will be kept open. If the record is kept open, it will be for a minimum of seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded to the applicant. Mayor, questions for the audience? Are there objections to the notice that was sent in this case? We posted notice on Facebook and several, on the website to, to make the staff report available. And are these objections to the jurisdiction of the council to hear and decide the case? So? And are these objections to the jurisdiction of the council to hear and decide the case? So are there any objections? Questions for council members. Are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflict or interest or bias by any members of the council? All right. So let's get to the staff report. Staff report, LA 20-01 for legislative amendment. Criteria, development code that we're looking at is Section 4.16, a type four procedure legislative amendment, Section 3.63 recreational vehicles and Section 3.8 for accessory structures. Exhibits that you all have available is the draft ordinance, the emergency ordinance, and a transitional housing permit that we would, if you all adopt this ordinance, that we would use to have people utilize if they are going to be having an RV as a temporary transitional unit. This text amendment is a legislative amendment, a type four application, type four legislative procedure. On November 17th, I met with you all in Planning Commission in a joint work session where we talked about affording flexibility to property owners impacted by the wildfires and direction was given for staff to come back. There were two sort of different courses that we wanted, the council-directed staff to bring back specific language that will allow RV structures, people to have an RV on their property for temporary residence, and also to allow for an accessory structure to be built prior to a primary structure. And so in this amendment, proposed amendment, Development Code, Section 3.63J, RV use as a temporary residence. The use of a RV vehicle as a temporary residence on a legal buildable lot is permitted, provided that the use of a self-contained RV vehicle is for emergency transitional housing in response to the Beechey Creek and Lions, Lionshead wildfires. The RV uses as a temporary residence is permitted as follows, and it's permitted in all the zones as long as it's on a legal buildable lot and a transitional housing permit is obtained. And then Section 2 outlines the requirements of the transitional housing, an application form, a site plan. There will be no filing fee. And then essentially one vehicle, the nuts and bolts, one vehicle is allowed per property for extended use. You must obtain required permits, building plumbing, electrical, if there are any needs needed. An RV is only to be occupied by four people. RV can be, the transitional permit is for 24 months with the potential of one 12-month extension. You have to meet setback requirements similar to what's required by the RV permit process now, that it has to be five feet from the front side and rear property lines that you, for power, you hook up for power, self-contained gray water, holding water can only be emptied at authorized dump stations. And if you hook up to septic, your septic system, you have to obtain a permit from public works. And then essentially through that, you are, by getting this permit, you're acknowledging that this is for temporary use exclusively while you are in the process of determining how you want to rebuild and move back on your property. The next set code section is Section 3.8.1, Primary Structure Required. An accessory structure shall not be allowed without another permit structure. That's what the current code says. The amended code will say, unless an accessory structure is being built on a lot impacted by the Beechey Creek and Lionshead wildfires in September 2020. Project, properties subject to damage from the fires in September are permitted to build an accessory structure prior to a primary, primary structure being built. And all of this is, both these sections of the code are going to have a sunset clause that this ordinance will be repealed three years from now. So that there's a window of time that we are intending that people are going to be able to use an RV for a longer-term use than the current RV permitting allows, and that you can have, be able to obtain a permit to be able to build an accessory structure primary, prior to your primary structure being built. So with that, we have criteria and findings that we have to make, meet when we're, when you all are making a decision per Section 4.16 of the code. And those criteria are the statewide planning goals, that you're meeting statewide planning goals. And findings for statewide planning goals, one through 14 is that the proposed amendments to the Development Code are consistent with statewide goals, one, two, and 10, and the remaining goals are not applicable because the amendments do not affect issues raised through those goals. Additional comments from applicable federal or state, state agencies regarding statutes or regulations. We received no comments from other agencies regarding these emergency ordinances. DLCD has been working with me and other planners in the area actively to find ways that we can allow for emergency ordinances like this to come into play so people can get back on their property in ways, afford cities flexibility. And then the last criteria, any applicable comprehensive plan policies and provisions of this code that implements the comp plan and that there's compliance with Chapter 4, and the land use zoning maps and text amendments. And so for all purposes, we are meeting those objectives and the fact that this is a temporary amendment with a sunset clause allows that. So with that, that is my staff report. What questions can I answer for you counselors?
Questions from counsel.
I heard that it would be a four-person limit. I have four kids. Is there an exception or how do you guys work with that? And also I heard three years and is that three years from the fire or three years from functioning water? What were the thoughts on that?
Okay, sorry, I'm going to open the staff report back up. Or sorry, if we look at the ordinance, so the limit of four person, there's not, there's not a provision in the Section 2 that allows for, because ultimately the person who's going to be processing this application is Kelly, the city recorder. She's going to be taking these in and reviewing. And there isn't necessarily flexibility on that requirement. So if the council would like to have that, there not be a limit or would like to have a larger number, by all means. This was just something I brought forward. It doesn't, if there are concerns on how it's either having a number to begin with or in affording some sort of flexibility on, you know, situations like yours, counselor, that seems appropriate. And you all can make suggestions and recommendations on changing. And the sunset clause, the ordinance will remain in effect until September 8, 2023. So when the state of emergency was declared from the wildfires, that date also can be modified. And by, I want to offer several things to you counselors tonight. There, there's another portion of, one other part of the code that I want to talk to you about. You all don't have to adopt this this evening. Like if you have questions and there are some things that you want to talk through and you want me to bring something else back, we can do that. And, and so don't feel like this is here and we have to make a decision and get this adopted. That while we want to and we don't want to have it linger and push out and push out, it's, it's important for you all to have some good dialogue and talk about what you want and how you want it to be implemented and work. And with that, what I'd like to offer is the one thing that isn't in this, but potentially could or should be soon in, in another amendment, would be because I've been hearing from property owners about being able to build, rebuild their non-conforming structures back, back. And so our code right now does not allow for someone to rebuild a non-conforming structure. We're not talking about non-conforming lots of record. We're talking about someone where, you know, similar to that variance, let's say that the setback is now 15 feet, but their structure was at 10 and they want to be able to come back and rebuild. And so the question is, do we want to, does the council want to have that, an element of this ordinance contain this language that will allow people to rebuild structures who are impacted, who either A, lost a house. Right now, if you, with people's houses that burned down, if they came in for a building permit, they would have to come into compliance with setback requirements. Marion County has a provision in their code that if you come in, you know, people whose property were impacted and their homes burned, they have a year from the date of the fire to be able to rebuild back to what the setbacks were or where the building was. So that was a, I just was trying to figure out when I'd get to bring this up and this seemed like a good point to your question.
So a couple of things, McCray. Thank you for this. It is so clear and easy to follow. I really appreciate it. And there's no contradiction of concept or anything. I do see where, as Counselor Tezdale brought up, I think the RV code concept was thought of someone to be staying in it while they're building, not that they're living in it full-time until their house is built. And so I think staying with four or more, if we could change the phrasing to say four or more depending on circumstances. If there's a way to write in a flexible clause, because then you say seven, but they say, oh, well, I have eight family members living in an RV. And now you're like, holy cow. So if there's a way to just write a tiny bit of flexibility in there, because, I mean, the Tezdale family is a perfect example of why four doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah.
What's wrong, you know, on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Becomes a problem, why do we even have to have regulation on that?
I'm sorry?
Unless there, something was to become a problem. I understand the concept behind this. We don't want a bunch of transients coming in and having a, you know, a group that they can say, oh, well, my uncle owns this place. So I can miss that. I get it. But for, for better sense of word, I'm, I don't know why there has to be any regulation on that. We need to lighten up and let people rebuild and let people live in their RVs to get stuff done. And the families that want to live back there that maybe can't afford to build right now is my opinion. And if there becomes a problem, you know, then we can address it before it gets out of hand. But it seems like there's just so much, so much dotted I's and crossed T's that, you know, we're four months in right now and the county is only allowing a year. People aren't going to rebuild in a year. It's just not possible for a lot of people, especially when we don't have water, we don't have the weather and everything else. And so just so much regulation and so much time. It seems like it's making a lot of a big deal out of something that should be a lot easier and less regulation.
I see. Let me finish what I was going to say is, we have been loose with our rules over the years and we have paid the price. We need to keep the regulations in and we need to keep a strict hand on them because what happens is, is if, and that's why I said four, and then based on circumstances where we can look at it again, because just as you said, Counselor Luke, then you get ridiculous situations happening. And, and the city of Detroit has had ridiculous situations happen in the past. And what we want to avoid going forward is to avoid those in the future. So if we have lots of rules and regulations, like every city in the country does have, that will continue to help us avoid problems in the future. As far as what Ms. McCray said, or Ms. Carmichael said in regards to that other part, we've already discussed that if you already had a structure that was non-conforming, that we, we discussed that we would allow you to build on your, because it's your legal lot and it was legal at the time, that you could, you could rebuild on those, with the parameters that were you were before. In other words, if you had a four-foot setback and it was allowed at the time, that you will be allowed to in the future if it in fact was a property that was built upon and then was destroyed in the fire. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes. Yeah, you did. You all, at the November 17th meeting, Counselor Engel, you all talked about that. You wanted property owners to have that flexibility. And, you know, mistake on me for not having this language for you right now. And I want to get clarity from you on what you want. Like, do you want to, do you want it to be specific only to, in response to the wildfires? And you want it indefinite, you know, with no, no provision, you know? So if someone, eight years from now, you know, at, long after all the things that we anticipate are going to happen in the canyon, they come in, you know, their house burned in September 2020 and they come in and are ready. Would that person still be eligible to have the setbacks? Or do you want to have a two-year, a three-year requirement? I think a one-year, similar to what Marion County has on the books, one year, we're already four months in on that one year. And people don't know what they're doing yet. So that does seem like a short timeframe. So. But you, yes, Counselor, you are correct that you all have talked about that you want to have it. I need to have more specific language that we can implement when people are coming to get their building permit and talking with us.
Counselor Page.
One of the things that I know we talked about and I want to see in this is, one, proof of ownership of the, what is being placed on, on that property. Because I do not want us to be constantly chasing somebody putting an RV on somebody else's property and saying, you know, their owner, whatever. We need ownership documents when a permit, the permit is issued and the city needs to be collecting a fee because we've got to manage this and we can't do it for free. Sorry about it, but that's the way it is. City can't do this for free. It doesn't have to be a huge fee. I mean, reasonable would be to me, $100, $150 a year for a fee for being able to do this. And that's just how I think the city has to function.
So the application, thank you, Counselor Page, the application for transitional housing does have property, applicant requirement and property owner requirement is listed. And there's also, there's a statement, the applicant slash property owner shall agree in writing that upon the expiration of the transitional housing permit, he, she, they shall remove the recreational vehicle from the lot within 30 days. And it has applicant's signature and property owner's signature. Are you saying, I mean, I, Kelly, myself, whoever's looking at this, we have the ability to verify through Marion County assessors, a property owner. Do you think that's sufficient or?
As long as, as long as that, the clarity is there that the person that's putting the RV there is the property owner and there's, and all this is connected. And should there be an issue that has to be dealt with during the time that that RV is there, for whatever reason, there might have to be something done, be it nuisance or, I, for whatever reason, that there is a chain of ownership and responsibility and who's, who's the player? And that's, that's what I think the city needs to be able to try and manage this.
Okay.
Question for discussion.
Kelly, you're muted.
Oh.
I had two questions about implementation of this. On Section 2, Part 6, that, let's see, how did I do this? That it can be occupied, all of that part. So my question is, if we already are seeing RVs up there that have already been moved in, I can think of one specifically that an RV is on a piece of property where there was a house and it has an accessory structure built over the RV now, a brand new accessory structure. We need, we need to go back and see their building permit. I mean, how do we, what do we do about RVs that have already been moved up? Um, we, they're, they've put them on land, but we don't see a building permit, or do we? So there's, there's the follow-up is, is what are we gonna, what are we supposed to do? And it, McCray, I don't specifically expect you to have the answer, but it's, it's, the question is, what are we supposed to do about people who've already put an RV up there? And how do we determine that they have filed their building permit? Um, and then the second one is, is number 10, about the, uh, gray water, the Marion, yeah. How, who collects that proof? And who has the proof that they have been approved by Marion County to make use of the septic system?
I think this permit would require evidence of that. You're coming to us saying, I'm getting a transitional housing permit. And we're saying, okay, so how are you, how are you taking care of, uh, your holding tanks? And they say, well, I'm going to be, um, bringing it to a dump station or I'm hooking up to my septic. And we say, okay, well, we want to see your septic authorization. We want to see your permit from Marion County.
Okay. So thank you. So in other words, it's going to take human hours to
Yes.
verify this. Therefore, I do think a permit fee is appropriate because we will have to pay people to be checking on these things, to following through on permits, to filing letters, to be filing the paperwork. That is all part of the process of building and, um, filling out and requiring permits. So thank you for the answer to that. Yeah.
So in regards to the RVs that, uh, may already be up there and so forth, aren't they allowed to have an RV on their property? One without any permit or anything else and if they're not hooked into anything? I know that's the code as far as I know it. And, uh, I've had my RV up there a couple of times and I plan to put it up there now and then and so forth. But, um, you know, there's a
You can park your RV, right? You're welcome to potentially park your RV. Now, I can't say I am, there is a lot to the RV, uh, permit in Detroit. And I am a new enough planner that I'm getting up to speed with it. But my understanding is that you can have it up there and there's the temporary, there's a temporary provisions for being able to have it. And that's supposed to be a shorter window. So this permit is intended to allow someone who wants to be able to, to live year round while they're making their decision and, and building, uh, to be able to have it. For, and, and not have potential non-compliance that would happen with our current code.
Yeah. And what I think it's really important, you know, I've been sitting into this and listening to some of the discussions up to this point. It wasn't on council, but it's really important to remember, um, there are some very, um, there's some unfortunate families that, you know, with the housing crisis that we already have in this nation and this city and everywhere else, we cannot continue to regulate and over-regulate and everything else because this is what we want as part-time people or this is what we want the here and there. We have to realize that, um, this is a necessity for those who have lost their homes and a lot who have lived there for a long time. A lot of them can't even afford an RV. They're going to borrow it from somebody or this or that. I understand we want to, we want to avoid pitfalls and we want to avoid big messes and this and that. But, um, it's, it's really hard, you know, when I heard the, you know, the one year and then the two year and then it, you know, it should just be, in my opinion, five years, boom. It's not going to happen in two years. It's not going to happen for a lot of people in three years. We just need to make it as easy as possible for people, while understanding the spirit of it to, to keep it tidy and to keep it clean. I know what we're trying to avoid. But it's, there's not, it's not such a big situation that we can't take this, a lot of these variances and so forth on a case-by-case basis. It's, um, it's the human thing to do, not just over-regulate everyone. And that's, it's my opinion on that.
But Tim, I, I will say this, um, that's one of the places I think we've kind of gotten in trouble as a community. We've, we, we'll take it individually and it becomes, it's, it becomes real easy for a city then to say, okay, I like Tim Luke, we're going to give him that variance. But I don't like Kevin Hills and we're not going to give it to him. And I think that's, that's a pitfall I see right there.
Oh, I understand that and I, I believe.
Oh, please, please. I agree. I thought we talked last year, McCray, or last council, at the last session, Craig, that we, at least I remember talking about it two years for sure. That two one-year extensions. And the only reason for the two one-year extensions, given my mind, was so that we could look at them when they, you know, okay, they have two years and I agree with Michelle, when does that start? Um, I don't think it would be the date of the fire. I think they need more time than that to, to kind of figure out what they want to do. But at the end of that two years, they have to come back to the council for a one-year extension of the permit. And, and the reason I think that should be there is so that we can, they can show us, here is what I'm looking at doing, or here's what I'm beginning to do at the end of the second year. At the end of that one, they could have another one year where they come back and say, okay, I've made this much more progress. So we as a council can say, hey, we're doing, we see what you're doing, we like it. And then after that, I'm, I'm open to maybe opening it up further down the road. But I think we have to, I, I think if we don't, my personality failed again. I think if we don't put something like that in place, it becomes too easy for them at the end of that three or four years, whatever we do, to say, well, why do I have to do it now? I, I think there has to be some kind of accountability from, uh, something from the, from the property owner that says, yes, I understand the code is coming back into effect. Uh, and nothing major. I don't mean, just you have to come back at the end of that two years, say, I need another year. Come back at the end of that one and say, I need one more year. And then after that, maybe we could even down the road, look at individual things. Yes, they are making progress. No, they don't have the money and could we do something at that point? But I, I think we need to, uh, just from my experience in this community and actually talking to other people, you've got to draw a line somewhere and then build in flexibility, maybe a little bit later. But start them with this thing of here's what I have to do in this, here's the time period I have to work in.
I understand that. Just want to make sure that it's flexible enough that however it's written, that, you know, at the end of two years, it's not just, there's nothing there and we have to do a whole different, um, modification to the code and everything else. Whereas in fact, we can look at it on a case-by-case basis is what I was referring to.
So, but the proposal that McCray proposed was a one-year. I, I, I thought I remembered us talking two one-year extensions. Maybe that was my thought process in my head.
Yeah. Well, that's why, oh, I'm sorry.
What, what it was, was, um, Mayor Trent suggested two years with a 12-month. And, um, some of us suggested three years with a 12-month extension. I'm really concerned about the water because if you build a house and that water doesn't show up for two years, a potable water, um, then you've built a house that you can't use.
Yeah. Well, I think that, that would pay play, for me personally, that would play into it. If we're all of a sudden seeing a problem where they're not going to be able to do stuff, then yeah, we would readdress this at that point. Uh, and, and I think we do need to have some flexibility there for that. But, um, I, I think just putting it in place now so we can start putting out, hey, here's, here's, here's the program. We're trying to make it as simple as we can for you, but you have to understand that this is going to sunset at some point. And, and trust me, I'm, I'm one of those people, I want to work with anybody who, who's willing to work. But I, I just, I, I'm getting cynical in my old age. I've just seen too many people who, who play it out till the end and then all of a sudden look at you and say, well, no, I'm going to do it this way and you can't stop me.
Agreed, Jim. Thank you.
And my, my memory was that it was two years and then two one-year extensions.
Right. But for permitting and the short staff and the, the busyness that's going to happen, the less permitting, like if we could get the job done with one extension instead of apply for a permit and then reapply. I mean, I believe I read that the county said they're going to give us five years with primaries, uh, without having a fee and two years for non-primary residents for no fee. I believe I just read that and then I couldn't find it on the Marion County website. But, um, I do believe that two years is too short, especially if you could back count to the fire. I mean, if, and I do agree that there's got to be an ending point to this. But, um, I just feel like two years where we, we have to apply in two years. If it's from the fire, that's too soon. It could be two years from when we get, uh, drink, water that we can drink. And then plus a 12-month, I mean, that sounds like a good idea, but I, I'm really concerned about the water issue, not having any.
Welcome to the club.
So with that, can I ask you a clarifying question? I, I, so I hear, um, I hear we want to have an additional extension. Mayor Tre, you were talking about the council being able to review it after two years. And I think the way I had envisioned that this would be implemented would be the permit is a really straightforward, simple, simple renewal. I mean, we can add a line at the bottom of the form essentially, um, that would, it would just be, um, contact with the city recorder. But by your statements, are you anticipating that each month that if, say we had? No. Okay. So it's not council review. I mean, there is that provision in the current RV permit process for council review. But I'm hoping to keep this very administrative and not to inundate the council with a lot of renewals. Like, I think we can keep that, um, pretty low. So I just wanted to clarify.
My, and my, my vision is that apply for that, for the, for the permit for, and two years. At the end of that two years, all they'd have to do is contact city and say, I'd, I'd like to extend the permit, not get a new one. It's just extend the permit one more year. The end of that, and here is my building plan or here is something like that. At the end of two years, at the end of that year, they can come back for another year and say, oh, here's my building permit. And I'm, I'm just throwing stuff out that comes in on my break. Something shows that they've made progress. And I don't even care. And then maybe after that, you go to the discretion of council. Maybe that fifth year would be, they would have to come to council where we as a group could look at it and say, okay, you haven't done anything for four years at all. What can we do?
Okay. Okay. So, um, I'm, I'm writing notes. I am thinking that there's just enough little tweaks in language that rather than trying to, you all come up with language tonight that you tell me that we adopted an emergency ordinance and we read lots of ordinances, I can make some revisions and bring them back to our council meeting in February for you all to have a nice, clean slate. Can, um, can you all clarify or work through both, uh, fee and the, um, non-conforming structures?
I was going to come back to that non-conforming structure. I think that we do need to set a timeline, a date on the non-conforming structure. I'm totally good with, um, allowing to be rebuilt on a non-conforming structure as it was when they legally had it before the fire. But again, I don't want, I would not want to see someone coming back in eight or so years when things are pretty settled in town to still want to build non-conforming, especially if people have been, have rebuilt on both sides. Like that will provide a lot of consternation for the neighbors. In my opinion, we should have it end whenever we figure out how long we're going to allow these building permit, the RV with the extensions. So when the extensions run out for the RV permit, I would say that's the same time that you, to build on a non-conforming lot, you would have to be finished. So if that's four years from now, so if that's whatever that would be, 2023, 24, whatever it is, to draw a line and not way out there.
And maybe what, um, in light of this time, I thought, I'd like to offer this to the counselors. Maybe what that timeline should be, you know, I had just kept us on track with, uh, the declaration, the emergency. But maybe it, uh, it should be effective the date you all adopt, um, an ordinance. You know, so say next month, um, you are able to review and adopt an ordinance. That becomes the timeline for four years.
That seems really fair, really, and very tidy and accurate.
Yeah. I think definitely from an administrative standpoint, that will just tack along and make sense. Because we have to think about Kelly and the city recorder and city staff managing this too.
Counselor Shepherd, did you have something?
Yeah. Do we have any input from the city of Paradise, California? How they're handling it or what, they've been going through it for two years already?
What their activity is like?
Yeah, yeah.
I can't speak with a lot of confidence about what they've done. I know that they haven't had a lot of rebuilds. I, I mean, I do know that piece of information, but I there are a lot of people who have been talking, but I have not.
Yeah, I heard they haven't had a whole lot of rebuild. That's kind of why I asked that question because I was wondering what, what the problems were.
People just not wanting to come back, but I hear. Counselor Page?
Thank you. Um, but planning is in session now. I mean, can't we take both of these issues with what's been talked about here? And, uh, kind of kick this back into part of some of the first stuff that they, uh, maybe put some tweak to, uh, in conjunction, uh, with McCray and, and get back to, uh, council with this at their earliest possibility between now and the next session or by the next session?
I would agree with that. One of the things I would like to put in there is, is what Counselor Tezdale brought up is when does this permit take effect? I, I don't think we go back to the date of the fire.
Well, I don't think that that's, I, I would concur. I don't think that's reasonable. And that's exactly one of the reasons that I think at this point, because we, this has been being worked on and, and, you know, the timeline has gotten stretched out. And, uh, council shouldn't be beating this dead horse any longer. As far as I'm concerned, this should be, uh, one of the first and foremost things for planning and McCray to get right on top of, uh, both of those issues. Just, uh, toot sweet, please.
Do I have a motion to send this, this item to the planning commission?
I'll make the motion to send it to the planning commission.
Counselor Tezdale moves to
I'll second it.
Second, Counselor Shepherd to move this to the planning commission, uh, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A both same sign? Abstentions?
No, that's not an abstention. I had a question.
Okay, question.
Did that include the, uh, accessory or the, uh, non-conforming structure? Did that, was that included with that, uh, send back, ascend to planning?
I think, I think it should.
Yeah. I was assuming that it, it did.
I also remember said, we, we had said it, one of the things we had talked about is if they were going to build in the same footprint, then they would be fine.
Yeah.
You can say that, but I have to have, we have to have code in place that, um, you know, allows that, right?
Line commission to work up in that.
Yep. So if I'm hearing correctly, I'm bringing something to planning commission and the goal is, uh, city council meeting next month with a final ordinance potentially?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I just wanted to mention that, um, we're getting, uh, a lot of phone calls with a lot of questions, people wanting to rebuild. And, um, we're getting impatient, of course, with the water, like, like all of us are. But, uh, just want to, just to mention that it's just, it's, it's picking up, I, I should say. So as, as soon as we can get this done, um, definitely the better. So I don't have to, um, so I can answer people's questions, um, correctly. Thank you.
So I'm supposed to close a public hearing? I thought we already did. Anything else? Because we're under an hour, we're down to under an hour for the rest of the, of the agenda. And we have one big one here. Okay. So moving along to unfinished business, uh, city water plant, Rob Henry.
All right, there we go. Um, I will try to be quick. Um, I,
All right, there we go. Um, I will try to be quick. Um, I, I'm going to give the summary and then uh, Kenny and Matt, Matt could jump in. Um, so where we're at, the flushing and the VOC testing, that remind, that remained on hold. Um, for a couple of different reasons. Uh, one of the things that happened is, the big, the biggest reason is that we're still. Uh, I guess you would say negotiating, working with FEMA regarding uh, liability on the RNG uh, distribution system flushing. Um, and, and we'll, we'll come back to that. In addition to that, we had, I think I might have talked about this at the last council meeting. Uh, we had plugging issues with the uh, Brighton Bush intake. Uh, the additional debris and everything that's coming down. The Brighton Bush is uh, causing the intake screen to, to plug. One of the things that happened is that when that plugged, there wasn't water that was going up to the silver bullet. The silver bullet pump, uh, booster pump kept running and uh, that's likely a failure of the, of the uh. Of the control system on there due to the fire and it burned up one of the pumps. So this week we got, or we got, last week we got that, the silver bullet pump uh, reinstalled. And we also uh, uh, had a contractor come in and do a new flush valve on, on the intake. So we should be able to blow that out. Problem is, as the river got higher, Bob is not able to walk out there and use a broom to, to, to brush it off. So normally we don't use the Brighton Bush intake during this, during the winter time. So uh, it's kind of a new thing for us. Um, the other issue that we have is we have, we have a huge amount of leakage still. Mostly that's because of the system being off for so long and then, and then uh, coming back on and off. Um, we hired American Leak Detection to come out and they detected about 150 gallons a minute of leakage. Which we're looking at, that we're getting about 150 gallons or to 200 gallons a minute of leakage. So um, they're not sure if they've, or they're sure that they didn't identify all the leaks. So we need to get a contractor or operator under, under uh, contracts so that we can have somebody out there fixing those leaks. So when those leaks are, if we don't get those leaks, leaks fixed, the temporary, the temporary treatment plant uh, won't be able to keep up with, with just the leakage. So, so that's a really high priority thing for us. Also with the VOC test, testing the, for benzene and, and other chemicals. We have to have three days of that water sitting in the pipe. And if this water is just leaking out, we're getting new water in there. So we aren't getting a good VOC test. Um, onto the water treatment plant, the temporary water treatment plant. We've got plans done and, and we have been in the process of negotiating um, with uh, Olson LLC. They're the ones who built the um, Idana uh, water treatment plant. And it's exactly the same company that, that we'd be getting the facilities, the stuff from. So USDA, um, so we've been negotiating that USDA has come back to us. And, and they said we, that we do qualify for that million-dollar EQUAG, the emergency grant. Um, but we are having diff, we are having some difficulty with uh, USDA's engineer not wanting to. Uh, allow us to sole source the construction on that because he doesn't feel like uh, we're in an emergency situation. So, so that's where we're at on that. Um, last week and the week before that, we, we, um, the FEMA inspectors were out to visit all of the, the areas that were destroyed. They have to, they can't take our word for it with our pictures or anything. They have to come out and physically look at every single thing and take pictures of everything. And they even went around and took pictures of stop sign uh, posts that burned. Um, but we had them out and I've been working with, actually all, all three have been working with FEMA. To go through their inspection reports and verify information for them and get all that paperwork done. It's very, it's been a very exhaust, exhaustive procedure, but we're about done with that. Um, I think I just signed the last of the things that need to be signed during the first part of the meeting. So um, Detroit, they, they did, the FEMA inspectors did say that Detroit's the first community in Oregon to get, to have them out looking at stuff. So hopefully that uh, helps us speed up any funding stuff that comes through FEMA. Um. Right now, clearly we're not providing any water at all, not, not non-potable, not uh, uh, filtered water. Uh, we're still in the process where we have to verify that there is no VOCs in the, in the lines to make sure that we can provide the non-potable water. And we need to uh, have the funding and the contracting all straightened out so that we can. Get the temporary treatment plant delivered from Westec. They have it all ready to go, just sitting in their warehouse in Utah. And as soon as we have somebody to actually put the thing in, we will um, have them ship that out.
Rob?
Yes?
Could I interrupt? Counselor Engel, could you take this for just a minute? I've got business I got to take care of. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I think Matt, it, um, can you talk a little bit about uh, the funding situation? And if I missed anything on the water treatment plant stuff?
Yeah, so uh, like you said, on uh, the treatment plant, we, at this point, we kind of have everything ready to go. We're just waiting on concurrence from USDA to allow, uh, well, on procurement procedures that they're going to require for this work. Uh, I spoke with a representative from Rural Development who is separate from USDA. But they're working with USDA on the application for uh, the grant fund. And they, USDA had a couple of questions, so I sent back responses to those questions. Um, but the uh, the application is sitting at the national office's desk and should be. They're, they're hopeful to hear back something this week. If not, they said, hope, they're hoping next week. So hopefully we can get back some official determination from them soon so that we can proceed with an agreement to get those grant funds to get the treatment plant constructed. Um, they've actually also are interested in providing some funds for repairs to the distribution system. Which I'll let Kenny and Rob touch on a little bit later. But um, so we're looking at adding those to the grant. I, according to them, that should not cause a hang-up or a delay by adding those funds or nor is another application needed. So um, it's just another avenue available to the city to get some repairs made. Um, but yeah, uh, so that USDA where the finish line is close on the grant funding. And that's going to be kind of the last hang-up along with their procurement procedures. Once we have procurement procedures in place from USDA as well as funding actually secured. We can move pretty quickly on getting a contractor out there to start working on this plant and getting it put in.
Um, the other thing is uh, also what's this, Matt, what's the status on the Special Public Works Fund uh, application?
Um, so that I've started, I've started the application. Um, we, part of that is the need basically timelines and budgets on a lot of different projects. So we're trying to get that. We'll need to meet with some city personnel to make sure that their projects are included in there as well. Um, so that um, hopefully we can get moving on this week and get that application processed.
Right, and one of the complications that we have with, with that funding thing, basically what that, what it is, is, is uh, uh, state of Oregon IFA, the Special Public Works Fund. Uh, which is lottery dollars. Basically, it's uh, good, they view that as a bridge loan. Um, so in basically, so that we actually have some money to pay people to do things and to buy equipment. Um, but it is all stuff that has to be FEMA eligible. So FEMA has to have their um, their projects created. And that's one thing, that, that's why we needed the FEMA inspectors to come out. Because they have, they have to uh, um, we have to have that, that project number in other, in order to uh, secure those funds. Did I say that right?
Yeah, and just to add to that a little bit, I guess, a little bit of background on what FEMA funds are is FEMA doesn't actually. FEMA will create projects where there is a need, an emergency need, but FEMA not actually pay for the projects. FEMA reimburses you for the cost of the project. So uh, that's where the bridge loan comes in is we would work with Business Oregon to create that uh, Special Public Works Bridge Loan. That would cover the cost of the installation of the project itself. And then FEMA comes in and reimburses 75% of the loan. And the remaining 25% of the bridge loan is converted to a Special Public Works Grant. And that grant is eligible for a maximum of $500,000 grant.
Okay. Um, Kenny, did you want, could you uh, go in just a little bit more detail on, on repairs to the uh, um, the flushing stuff? And the repairs to um, the distribution system leakage? And, and maybe we could, this I guess would be a decent time to talk about um, some, the assistance that we're trying to get for, for operator assistance?
Uh, yes, of course. Um, to make a long story short, uh, the repairs that need to be completed are complete. Uh, so we've replaced the assembly that needed to be in place in order to function. We've replaced the other damaged pump. Uh, so to the best of my knowledge, uh, Bob is in the process of filling the water system right now because it did drain in the interim. And then beyond that, um, I believe I would like to get into flushing next week or this week if timing allows. And I will need about a week solid to do that. But there is a complication, which is that in order to do a flushing or in order to keep up with a good flushing uh, timeline. Uh, the system basically needs to be operated or needs to be running 24/7 for that week. And right now, both myself and Bob, the operator and your engineer, agree that running this system unsupervised at any point is an extremely bad idea. We think that we have everything addressed that we need to in order to safely run the system. But we're going to be stressing it very hard when we actually do the flushing. So we do not want to risk any more damage to the system. And so unfortunately, what that means is that before I can start flushing, I really do need to get additional operators on staff. So that for at least some period of time, we can adequately operate the system. Um, so that's getting into the need immediately for more operators. But also, the system right now is completely unautomated. Uh, and so what was something that Bob could run by himself fairly easily before is now very much, too much for him to handle by himself. So um, in order to make it possible for him to operate the system between now and when automation is returned. He needs help and the best people that we could find for that are Highland Water Corporation. Uh, they are a small Oregon company that operates a number of small systems throughout the state. And this time of year, they have an abundance of staff available. So they were the best uh, availability we could find to get the city flexible staffing for the next two months is what I started with. But it's hard to predict uh, how long we're really going to need them, uh, given that I don't necessarily know when we're going to get automation back. Uh, so that's what I've got for the water system. Um, and actually I think for water control, it'd be best if I actually turned over to Michelle Tesel a little bit on this one. Uh, Commissioner Tesel, because she's been instrumental in trying to track down funding to address the issues that are rising in town. Um, and I think she probably knows a little bit more about it than I do, at least when it comes to the funding side. Although I know a little bit more about the actual condition, unless you have an issue with that, Rob?
Um, yeah, let's get through the water uh, things. I, I think uh, now's a, a good time for uh, questions from council.
Questions?
Um, I had a question about the temporary water uh, treatment plant. Um, in your estimation, with that supply, when we can drink the water, would that supply households um, in the winter time? What do you think about um, your estimates on when we start getting going in the spring and summer? Um, we're spending a lot of time on that temporary one. I just want to make sure uh, it won't run out, you know, when we start using it.
Yeah, so the intention of this one is that it, it's, it is a smaller plant. It's capable of treating 70 gallons a minute. And the intent is that basically it can meet the capacity of people living in Detroit now. And once we get this set up, it is, it's going to serve, the idea is that it'll serve the city for the next probably eight to 12 months. Um, and in that time, we'll be issuing a request for qualifications and actually be doing a source water study. To determine, A, that the correct long-term treatment options and technologies for the city. And B, put that out for request for qualifications and get a new permanent facility manufactured. So as, as residents start moving back into the city, it is going to struggle a little bit. I mean, I, you do have some room with the 70 gallon a minute plant, as long as we can get leakage addressed. Um, that it'll, it'll absorb some growth, but long-term probably past a year, we're hoping to have permanent equipment. That's actually sized for the full population of the city.
And if I may jump in a little more, um, Rob and I were actually talking back and forth about this in the middle of some of the planning discussion. And we wanted to clarify that 70 gallons a minute, as long as we get a very good handle on leakage in the system, should be enough to support. All of the residences currently in Detroit. Although there, if we start adding in more businesses, that capacity is more tenuous. So if say Kane's Marina were to come back, um, that could be more questionable. So it would be very important for the city to take proactive measures to conserve water. If that were to become the case, to make sure that Kane's Marina could operate adequately over the weekend.
So uh, Eric Patcher, um, just when, when you say uh, enough water capacity to serve all the residents in the city. Uh, let's clarify, you're saying all the residents, uh, all, all the water meters in the city of Detroit, is that what we're talking about?
All the current connections. So, so as you guys re, get back out, I think you had roughly around 400 connections before the fire. Uh, it, it would not be suffi, I mean, it, it, it might be able to handle 400, but it would be operating all the time. So it, it would uh, be able to handle the people you've got basically, and, and it's a short-term plan.
So uh, yeah, so uh, the math, just doing the math based on, you know, Oregon standard water usage numbers. Which actually Detroit's are a little lower than that, but using, using the standard that we see for, in, for Oregon. Um, that, that, that should be able to, to do about 250 homes, okay, at normal home usage. So if we add RVs in there, RVs use maybe half the water, if, if not even maybe a third of the water that a, a home would. So yeah, we're going to be stretching and I, and I would like to have uh, something a little bit bigger. But where, you know, what was available was, was either this or way, way too expensive.
Uh, the other question I did have is, uh, so you mentioned in the beginning uh, that you're, you need to get a contractor for pipe replacement. Uh, for broken, leaking, burned pipes. Um, have you identified um, all of those or a substantial amount of them?
Um, so when, when American Leak Detection came out, they, I don't know, Kenny, you can, you can answer this question maybe better than me. I'm not sure exactly how many leaks they, they uh, detected, but um.
Yeah, I can take this one. Uh, so all told, we detected about. Uh, so all told, we detected about twelve leaks, uh, varying in size from single gallon per minute to I think the largest was about fifty gallons a minute. Um, so they, in, in, beyond just, uh, stating that there are these number of leaks, they also do specify relatively accurately the location of those leaks. Uh, so I know that we've got about twelve to fix now and kind of doing a little bit of head math on what I know that we isolated versus the quantity that we were told. I'm guessing we have about another fifty-ish gallons a minute that weren't characterized in this first leak detection. It could be less. But those will also be, uh, tracked down, located and fixed. But we've got the locations for the first round.
So the way the leak detection works is they basically, they, they listen to the pipe, they listen, they listen to the noise that, uh, water makes leaving the pipe in, in, with a leak. Um, and they were not confident that they were able to locate all of the leaks because uh, those leaks, especially like the one that's fifty gallons a minute, were making such a, so much noise that, uh, they couldn't, uh, you know, be confident.
Familiar, yeah, I'm pretty familiar with the process. I understand it, so.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess the question is, is, are you, uh, would be, are you kind of looking for a contractor taking this on open-ended or uh, obviously there's no way to put a scope of the project because we don't have a scope of the project?
Right, right. So there, there's a couple of ways to go about this. One of the, one of the ways that we could go about this would be, um, to have, um, yeah, I mean, it's going to have to be on a time and materials basis. So whatever we do. Um, we could have, you know, if we enter into a contract for operations with, with Highland Water, they could, we could pay them on their time and materials for them to search around and find those leaks, because they do that for all their systems. They have crews that do that. Um,
And this is part of the people that you're, uh, working with to, uh, keep an eyeball on the system while it's functioning.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, when we went through this, the, uh, one of the, I, I just, somebody from EPA was, uh, had called and was talking, and I was explaining the leak thing to him, and he's like, well, why did you have your, your city crews out there fixing it? Um, and, you know, I've explained that Detroit's a little bit small to have city, city crews out fixing, but that's essentially what, when you're, when we have leaks, we know kind of where they're at, and you go and fix them. And then, okay, the water's still leaking, so you go and you shut valves and, and try to isolate them that way. Um, so I don't, operator experience was really, uh, would be, is really handy with that, so I don't know which way the city would like to go on that. Um, I do know that, um, that we've got, that this, this money will be, I mean, the cost will be covered uh, by one funding source or another, but it won't be covered by, it won't have to be paid by the city of Detroit.
Okay, okay. So, um, what, uh, I have one other question related to the new water plant that, uh, you guys have, uh, landed on, and that is, is with, uh, so you're, you're accounting for its capacity to serve uh, based on only the silver bullet holding tank at this point, obviously. Is that? Is that?
No, no, no.
The silver bullet is not part of that loop.
Well, the, the what, the, yeah, it goes up to the silver bullet tank and then it, then it would be pumped up to where the treatment plant is right now. And then that water would be treated and go into the, uh, the glass fuse to steal the green reservoir that didn't get damaged in the fire.
Okay.
But we'd have that much, we'd have all that reservoir storage as well.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's your accounting of, of usability, usable water is, is, uh, what can pass through the silver bullet, be processed through the plant and the reserve capacity of, uh, the, the, the holding tank.
Yeah, so that, that, um, that would take, that would take out, the, the tank being drawn down would help any like peak usage that would happen when there's, you know, weekends or more people, so.
Right. And assuming that, uh, our system, uh, we do a good job of tightening up the leaks.
Correct. Yeah, I think that's critically important and, you know, I mean, that's better for the city in the long run anyway.
Uh, no doubt about that.
Yeah.
Uh, my, my last question, I did have one more. What's the status of, um, what, where we're at with, um, our current contractor wrapping up, uh, the balance of their, um, project?
You mean RNG?
RNG, yes, sorry.
Kenny, do you want to answer that?
Uh, yeah, sure. Uh, they are currently in process. Um, they have completed the majority of the work. Uh, last I saw, they had completed the four under the highway. Uh, so there is pretty minimal work left for them to do. Uh, for the most part, now it's going to be left is figuring out how to address uh, some of these deeper roads and getting them sealed up for the winter. What we're hopeful we can do is find an AC plant that's open and put down some, put down some hot mixed asphalt on, I believe, Hill Street and Hill Street, uh, Third Street and then D Street. And that should help get everything, uh, cleaned up. It's a little bit too much for cold patch. It's not going to be the highest quality asphalt, but we're going to be overlaying all these areas anyway from spring, so what's important is stopping the gravel from piling up on the roads and these deep runs, uh, possibly causing damages to somebody's vehicle in the future.
Yeah, we've got some real problems being created when we're, I'm hoping we're going to slow some traffic down. But, uh, the, so the line to the highway department is what's the status on that?
That's not, go ahead. Okay, yeah, so that's not completed yet. ODOT had reached out to us about, uh, potentially, uh, drilling their own well if the city would be okay with that. Um, it's outside the city limits, so the city doesn't really have much say over that. Um, so I think we were kind of waiting to see what they were, uh, going to do before we have, uh, RNG finished that.
Okay, uh, have you guys ever looked at, maybe some backup wells for the city for, from that standpoint?
Yeah, so, uh, the, the wells are, uh, uh, they're just not good around here, right? So, um, so that, that would really be the problem.
Right. Okay, you got, you guys answered my questions. I appreciate your time on that and, um, my, my perspective is, is the sooner we can, uh, you know, uh, hopefully make it, make an agreement, I don't, um, I, I would be all for moving ahead with, uh, getting the contractor that you have chosen for eyeballing to get them on some pipe repair, get some leaks plugged up and, and, and keep pushing on this thing. We gotta, we gotta get water flowing.
Absolutely.
Rob, I just had one question, the status of the new water meters?
Yes.
Are they in, are they still in the, in the works building? What's the status of those?
Kenny?
Kenny?
They're in, and the meter boxes are largely installed.
Okay, so I have a personal question. Is the concrete container that sits on the surface of your lawn, your dirt, whatever, mine is completely crushed. And so I don't know if that is due to what. And so then that's part of my question in, in general, when there are issues like that, are those getting replaced and repaired as they're replacing the water meters?
Uh, they are supposed to be, uh, replacing damaged water meters. Um, I think that they have been making the judgment to leave some more crushed, uh, concrete boxes in place because those are actually more functional than they appear. They still hold up decently well. Although of course, I haven't had a chance to review every single house and make sure that every single water meter that needs to be replaced has been replaced. I knew they've replaced some two hundred odd meters. Or, yeah, hundred odd boxes.
Yeah, so we'll need to go through and, and, and when, when they think that, when they request a walkthrough, we'll have to go through and get a punch list and, and if we see meters like that, that meter boxes that need to be replaced, we'll, uh, we'll make sure that that gets done.
Well, regardless of mine or not, it's good to know that they've all been, um, replaced, because I, I do get that question a lot and my honest answer was, I don't know. So it's good to, to actually know the answer and to know that the answer is real positive. So thank you.
Yeah, and to drill a little further into that one, by the way, um, one of the first things we'd want our operator to do beside help us flush is to go through and somehow, uh, either zip tie or otherwise seal off everybody's water service, because I've got about a dozen cases I can think of where somebody's turned on their own water service and, uh, for a variety of reasons, we don't want people either drinking or taking a shower or basically touching this water until we know that there's no VOCs in there. So that's one of the things that having an operator that isn't overworked or that isn't overwhelmed by the normal duties of just running the system, that's one of the benefits of having an extra operator, is somebody can go around and do meter patrol and make sure that people's water services are staying on.
So what do you guys need from us to, uh, get something moving on that?
Get in there.
Let me ask one more question.
Yeah.
We're running out of time for you.
Okay, do you, is there any clue of timeline of when you'll have any kind of water into houses with the temporary, with non-potable?
So, so, um, I, I sense that was a leading question. Uh, we were on a call today with FEMA and we've been waiting for their, uh, legal determination and we kind of got the, the, uh, uh, the answer that they don't know if they're going to get, uh, give us a legal determination. So, um, we need to make the decision as to whether or not we should go ahead and just, uh, flush the RNG lines.
And fighting with RNG, they seem to be on board with the idea of us doing them, although again, it was talking with, uh, the president of the company and he's not super detail oriented in the way he thinks. So I was planning on drilling down with the project manager and their office manager to get more details of what their conversations with their insurance and FEMA were like.
Were those lines previously pressure tested?
Yes, they were. Yep.
So I'm still waiting for any.
Oh, for that answer. Uh, if we could, um, if we could flush those lines and, um, have some, like, if we could flush those lines starting next week, um, I don't know, Kenny, we could probably, it's probably two weeks, three weeks before we could have water to everybody.
Yeah, I would say a safe estimate at the moment is, uh, end of this month, uh, to the middle of February, we should have non-potable water, uh, assuming that no more surprises pop up, um, which is the big assumption at this point.
And then.
So a safe, yeah, Matt, go ahead.
As you say, I'll jump in on the treated water side. So a, a little bit of this is a, as much as we're pushing, we're a little bit subject to USDA and, because I mean, and, and getting grant funds to essentially pay for a contractor to install it. Um, if we can get that application approved in the next week or two and we can also get their concurrence on the procurement method of, of non-competitive procurement to Olson LLC, then they get there, they're able to start construction on this immediately and we can get their treatment plant shipped out and probably installed. As long as we get that this week, then, and we can get them started work next week, uh, we can probably have treated water within uh, three to four weeks. But I, I think it, we could probably push that. I, I guess I don't, I don't want to promise that we could get it faster, but the goal would, I think it's possible that it could happen a little bit sooner. But I think conservatively, three to four weeks, once we get concurrence from USDA.
And also worst case with that, if for some reason we're not able to get leakage under control, it is still possible to have a distribution point at the treatment plant where people can fill up. But the very least, we can stop hauling in water from Idana and instead fill up the Marion County truck with our own water. That would also be an option.
And so, so kind of the best case scenario or even just realistic scenario, sounds like the middle of February?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you, um, I know that USDA, the loan application, USDA is back in Washington DC being, um, being, uh, evaluated. I also know that both US senators have contacted Jeff Reddum, the director of the USDA, and he's been told he needs to expedite that process as fast as possible, whatever that means. So they are trying. Um, not fast enough, I think, but they're, they're definitely. Okay, any other questions? We're reading, pressing your time. So, um, Rob, this resolution that we have here, uh, uh, the city would like to propose a direct award to Olson LLC, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what I, what I have, counsel, what I have here is resolution number six twelve that would, uh, allow us to enter into a contract with direct on debt with Olson LLC under the terms of our emergency, um, emergency, uh, declaration. And so I'll read that. And basically, it just allows us to sign this contract without going out for bid. Uh, resolution number six twelve, whereas on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, a state of emergency was declared for the city of Detroit due to the fact that local resources were depleted and requested. Federal, state and county assistance, resolution six ten, which was due to, uh, severely rapidly spreading wildfires along Highway twenty-two at rates throughout the North San Diego Canyon since Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, has affected the county of Marion and specifically the entire corporate area of the city of Detroit, neighboring cities of Gates, Idana, Mill City and unincorporated areas between the cities. Whereas the wildfires have caused a significant loss of property throughout the canyon and specifically an estimated seventy-five percent of the housing stock as well as commercial property in the city of Detroit requiring evacuation of all residents since Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, whereas the emergency disaster was caused by natural causes linked to fire accelerated by ongoing dry weather conditions and high wind activity. Whereas the city of Detroit needs to begin immediately restoring water access to the community by installing a temporary water treatment plant. Whereas the FEMA fact sheet for public assistance contracting crimes checklist states non-competitive procurement may be used under certain circumstances, one of which is when the public, um, exigency or emergency will not prevent a delay resulting from competitive solutions. Whereas typically a project would be advertised for bids for months. Another month to finalize the contract, city of Detroit not having, twenty-two months is not feasible. Therefore, be resolved if the city of Detroit would like to propose a direct award to Olson, uh, Olson LLC as they have immediately the ability to work on the project for the community to work. And they've been competitive bids in the past adopted this. So we'll have a motion to accept resolution, adopt resolution number six twelve.
I make a motion, you adopt resolution six twelve.
Okay, um, motion, motion, counsel, page, second?
Second, Mr. Engel.
Second, counsel Engel, discussion? All of the previous, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Action, motion passed, as you may understand. Okay, well, thank you very much, Rob, and we'll be, I'll send the project, I did get you, I think, thank you, with that, um,
Yeah, um, one, one additional thing, I, I think, uh, in the very near future, we need to have a probably a council work session to discuss funding, uh, because that's a big thing of what we've been doing is trying to, well, basically trying to make sure that we are not putting the city out to where uh, you're not going to get your stuff covered. So, um, if we can find a date where we can do that, uh, it's, that's way too complicated for a normal council meeting.
We will set that, we will set that up.
All right, thank you so much.
A, a funding workshop, I think. Can we, can we do that in terms of a workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah, work session.
Yeah.
Hey, Rob, one last question before you're done. Uh, so just, I mean, what's the risk here on this, this deal we're waiting on? On, on, on these pipes? I mean, what, what's the risk factor here on the pipes that we haven't put water to?
Right, so worst case scenario, um, they're all bad and, and we have no way to pay for them to replace them. Um, that's the worst case scenario. I don't see that being the case. I mean, I guess I'm going out on a limb here a little bit, but not really. They They, our other tests seem to be fine. We found a few things, uh, a few VOCs, but none of, none of the regulated ones. Although, once one of them's there, there's a chance, there's a much, much higher chance of the, of the the hazardous ones being there. But that being said, we haven't seen anything, any, any other tests that we take, have taken. Um, so yeah, the risk would be that we would uh just, you know, have to find a way to pay to fix those, fix that pipe.
Yeah, Rob, I feel a little less comfortable going out on a limb than you do, just given that we only tested the lowest part of the system. So that's not where the VOCs are likely to be.
Yeah. That's a good point.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so moving along, because we're really under the gun now, um, coronavirus, uh, city hall. Um, we will be leaving our temporary quarters here at the office office, uh, getting Thursday, moving Friday, moving Friday, uh, Monday is a holiday, so uh we will be open for business um, in Stateon at hello, uh, twenty-three forty Martin Drive, Suite one oh three in Stateon. That's an office complex just behind the Dairy Queen and the pharmacy there as you go into town. Uh, it's small, but we think we can make it work according to staff. Um, and uh rent is nine seventy-five a month plus a hundred dollars a month in utilities and the insurance is paying the rent. So update on that. Coronavirus relief fund, uh, there was twenty-five thousand dollars made available to to cities uh to be used only for coronavirus relief uh activities. Uh, we identified that we would like to have a sound system uh because of of the social distancing things and it was hard to hear people. We saw that last August at the city, at the uh Saturday annual meeting. Um, and so we've, we purchased part of that. We can do even better with uh cameras and stuff like that to uh video. So we don't necessarily have, we can go to Facebook and do some of this stuff. Um, we were supposed to extend those funds by December thirty-fourth, but we're trying to figure out exactly what we need. Uh, they have extended that uh that deadline. Uh, we have requested to be included in that extension, so it should not be a problem. Um, we'll have some more time to really find, find the system that we need. Uh, just an update there. Uh, we do have.
You know what the deadline is now, Jim?
I can't remember. I know the, the uh, the extension had to be requested by January fifteenth, but I think goes for several months, a few months. I cannot remember the exact.
Okay, fair enough.
Uh, we, we, next on the council is website bids. Um, I'm looking at, this could take some time. What we have is, um, if you haven't met David Dolly, he's been helping us with, with with electronic kinds of things. He's the one that solves all our problems uh before these meetings and uh we're gonna, he's gonna address that. If we could put this off just because of of time, um, he's willing to work. He thinks uh he could make some things happen with the current site, at least temporarily, to make it more user friendly. David, could you give us just a a couple of ideas for what you're talking about there?
Yeah, e- even if a yeah.
Go ahead.
Even if we selected a company tonight, i- it's gonna be at least a month before all the data is migrated over. And so, um, I think the, the proposals can be sent to you counselors to weigh in on and see what body of work these applicants have done and get a feel for something to say, I like that. But under the current circumstances of needing, needing to keep people informed, uh, we may need to plan the next month of how we're gonna reach people because we have people that aren't, aren't able to watch Zoom. We have people that may need a newsletter. They're not at their address, obviously, in Detroit, so I would um recommend to find where our people are and how they want the information. Some may need a newsletter because they don't have computers. And so that may be something that we can really identify where our citizens are and then distribute the information to them where they are. We get huge numbers on our social media. Uh, we've had just tonight, um, a lot of activity and questions that we're uh getting people out to, but the website is just one of the mechanisms to reach people. And I, in interviewing Jim, who were sending the information to be posted on the website, it happens in a timely fashion. And I would like to put a plan together of the next thirty days because we wouldn't have this, the new site up even in less than thirty days. What information do we need to get out? How and where our citizens are at? And then give these proposals, links to the counselors to come back and weigh in and and say which sites they liked. And uh vet that a little bit more so that we can come back and have a discussion about there's a site that we like. And city sites are really diverse. Many cities citizens can pay their water bill through their website. That may be a criteria that Detroit may want to go to. And so, um, just a bunch of these other things that cities are using in twenty twenty that you may want to say, oh, that's not a priority right now. We used to do the basics. Or let's do an infrastructure uh with those tools that we can bring on down the line. So that's kind of just my thoughts as far as communications. We also have a town hall with FEMA that we are looking at putting together, hopefully the end of this month, but we're wanting to, to do more outreach to the citizens so that we have the questions at where they're are at right today, months after the fires happened. Many have had interactions and where are their challenges? So we can bring those answers to this town hall. So there's other mechanisms of uh outreach that we're doing to get good questions that were being asked so that FEMA just doesn't say, go to a website. Uh, the feedback that we have from other agencies is the Detroit community many times would rather talk to a person who's an expert on a field, whether there are second home questions, homeowner questions, um, versus, oh, just go to the site and apply. And websites can be intimidating. There's a thousand links. So those are some other things is to have some people who have been through the process that can hold folks' hands through the process that I think we get uh more engagement with people during this time to get their questions answered and find funding and loans and get all their questions, our loans forgivable. There's a myriad of questions working between the SBA and FEMA that we want to hear what you've been dealing with and how to resolve those concerns so that the town hall is really with what people are dealing with now. So those are just some ideas for communications that we have in the works. And that's kind of just my two cents. I'd love to maximize the current site, which we can have stuff up there tomorrow. Uh, and then plan for, if you do, council decides to migrate to another company, then you guys know the process. It'll be a month before all the data from the current site is put over there and there's a turn on from one side to the other. The other thing is for you new counselors to have your own email at the city. That's another discussion that most cities do and you could talk about that uh maybe integrated into that site and contact you and and look at ways other cities are communicating and see what you all want to do in that criteria.
David, my question is, if we, if we didn't make a decision on, on this tonight, in a conversation, I thought I heard you say that you could make work with the current website manager and get some of the more interactive stuff up almost immediately. So we'd have something between now and when we address.
Yeah. And I, it'd be good to know what for those of you listening to this meeting, what are you not having on the site that you'd like on the site right away? So that we can really respond to you and you know, get you the information there and on social media. And then you know, I, I still think there's people who are still displaced and reaching them has been difficult, whether to mail it to their old address that we had. We may need to get phone numbers to where we can text people if they want to. That may be the best way to reach some people and I don't know that we have emails of all the people that had paid their water bill. We just have addresses. So I really want to work to get the data on our citizens and then get them the data where they are and how they want it sent to them. Would be helpful for people in this transition phase, I would think.
Um, I would like to say something. This is Michelle Tezdel. Um, I think it'd be really important right away to get uh the counselor's contact information on the website. Um, people are struggling to even find us. So um, that, and then also the communication. Uh, it was suggested to me that maybe we get the uh planning commission together and maybe we could get like a three member team where their contact is on the information, where they actually have the current um, information rather than going to the websites because the websites do, you click this, you go to hearing, it's all old information, how to recover from a fire and we we're going into more details that we need with rebuilding and whatnot. So uh those links aren't very helpful anymore.
So what I'm after, I'm looking at time, uh, because we're gonna get cut off whether we want to or not.
I'd like to make a motion that we table the discussion on the websites till next month.
I don't. Go.
Yeah, Mr. David Dolly can work with the current master on bringing some stuff up right away.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get with her this week and I'll email each of you counselors on stuff that you're hearing that you'd like on the current site. And then email you back on the status of getting those basic points up right away. That way we discussion of a movement towards the information you're hearing needs to be on the site.
Counselor Paige.
Well, I just, uh, I have serious concern about, you know, this is another one of those issues kicking it down the road in another thirty days. This thing we're deep into on lack of communication. We've got multiple projects coming online. Uh, there's several foundations that are, you know, ju- trying to generate uh donation money and what have you. The longer we stay silent and this archaic website that doesn't do anything right now, uh, continues to function without any information pipeline going is ridiculous. I mean, we, I don't think we're in a position where we can continue to have this thing bottled up like it is. Um, it, you know, at the very least, maybe we ought to choose one of these uh website opera, uh, people that uh, you know, threw some so- something at us here to uh get, get co-working with David and uh try and give this thing a little bit of a turbo boost. I don't think we can s- uh sustain a thirty day wait to do another thirty days before somebody develop it. You're talking sixty days, we're headed into spring. I don't think that's a good plan.
My two cents. Work session to vet out these, these companies. And we meet in the next week, three of the counselors or a body of you and report back to others kind of a, a faster way to implement this thing, what we have and what it would take to get where we want to go.
Great, you should have it on Monday. That's my opinion. You need to get all, get, get, vet those companies. I'm more than happy to have you get involved in the vetting process.
Okay.
Uh, ca- call in one or two counselors if that's what needs to be done. This thing needs to be done, tabled, finished by next Friday and movement on it.
Okay, we can set up a Zoom meeting and schedule those companies to have a discussion uh with a committee of counselors in the next week.
Perfect.
I'm, I, a special session next week works. I mean, anything to move this along, I'm, I'm game.
Yeah, and David, since I spearheaded it, I'm happy to, to participate.
Okay.
So I'm and I was gonna propose same, counselor, we have a special session. They can, like the last one we had was fairly short, so and deal with just minor issues. And and my thought is, I guess, as council, we may be looking at more than one meeting a month.
Uh, good suggestion.
Yep.
So, because, yeah, thirty days is just too long to wait.
Yeah.
With, without dissent, then I will, we will uh put this on the table for right now. Uh, with the understanding that we'll have a venting of the applicants uh first part of next week and a special session to follow very quickly by the end of next week. Any dissent? Okay, so moving along, um, just very quickly about the trees yesterday, this is from uh city court, yesterday I spoke with Ken and Morris Deputy Director of Environmental Programs and Resiliency, AC Disaster Consulting, AC Disaster Consulting is helping the state in regards to step two debris cleanup. He said the state is drawing up an IG for wildfire recovery operations, step two cleanup activities at which time staff will present, be, will present to the council. Staff has sent the attachment, a scope of work specifications, has a tree removal services to the council via email. Okay, um, for information, um, contract with Highland Water. Uh, councilor, Kelly?
I'm sorry. Talking to you, what, what was your question, Jim?
Contract with Highland Water, eleven point three.
I didn't understand what you said.
On your agenda, on the agenda, number eleven point three says contract with Highland Water.
Um, Matt, uh, was, is working on the contract. I put it on there because um, I didn't know if that was gonna be.
Oh, okay. It was, okay, fine, thank you. Moving along, correspondence, um, we didn't have any letters received or sent, if I can see, so we'll move along there. And both the commission and mayor's report, um, I'm going to attach, I, I, I've been tracking meetings I've been attending. I'll take that a part of my report. Um, I do want to uh remind counselors that there's an elect, uh, lead of Oregon city's elective essentials training on January twenty-six, nine to three thirty. Uh, it is pretty imperative. I think that, that if you haven't attended one, you do. And I'm attending, I've done it now three times. It's just kind of what we can and cannot do as counselors. It gets into a lot of stuff. Go from there. Um, finally, I would just like to thank the council of governments for um, being a very hospitable host for us here. Uh, they continue to say we can use the facility. Um, when we get back to in-depth meetings, if we don't have a place closer to Detroit, we can still use their, their meeting room upstairs because the, the new site in Stateon, a lot accommodated, uh, council meeting. So that would be my report. Um, you know, we don't have police commissioner, streets, Greg Shepherd, real briefly, if you could, Greg. Greg, are you there? Hello? Looks like you moved away. Okay, water commissioner, we, I think we talked the water thing pretty good. Uh, building commissioner, counselor angle.
I didn't receive anything, so I have nothing to report.
Um, hey, Shelley, um, I called or emailed Marion County today or yesterday asking where that was and they're having um issues. And so they are having to bring an IT person in to fix the issue. So it'll be later this month.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission report, counselor Paige.
Uh, real quick, hey, we had a great uh Christmas event up there at the park, uh, brought lots of people. Um, I thought it was, you know, fantastic. Um, the next thing related to park is we have a major contribution coming in for um, the uh
gazebo.
Gazebo, thank you, Jim.
Pavilion.
Is uh pavilion gazebo, uh, it's gonna include a stage. I don't know, I've seen no design on it. This is uh the uh Santiam wildfire recovery group, uh, based kind of with the state and hospital. They've, they've re- reformulated somewhat. But anyway, this is a completely donated, built, done structure given to Detroit. This is like the portal into the Santiam Canyon, uh, and, and it's gonna represent wildfire and different things that happened. They're putting this thing together. We're meeting tomorrow to do some staking, looking, walking, and then they'll draw up a proposal for it. Um, I don't know anything more about it other than this is a private group, all private money. They're gonna do it and give it to us and it's great. So um, I will update as I can. Um, and I'm excited about it. We shall be really thankful. They looked at all cities up and down Highway twenty-two affected by the wildfire and they chose Detroit and the Detroit City Park. So what a, what a great deal for our city. Done.
Yeah, if anybody's in Salem, I, the plan that I saw, it's very similar. They built one for uh out at Capital Chevrolet north, just off of Salem Parkway.
Correct, yeah.
Was, I drove in and looked at it. It's pretty impressive. So I would be there for, for people to look at. Was, I drove in and looked at it. It's pretty impressive. So I would be there for, for people to look at. But that's coming down the road. Okay, where does he prepare this? I have nothing. I think we're beat out, but yeah. Planning Commission. They probably, probably talked about them too. So we go from there.
Jim?
Yes.
Could, could we, can, can we ask planning for the next three to six months to put themselves on a twice-a-month meeting rotation? I think we're going to be feeding them from various directions, plenty of things. If we could get them. We can't wait a month for them to render on some things. Do you think that's possible?
Yes, I think so. I'll talk to Kelly and we'll start, come up with some schedules.
Even if it's zooming, you know?
Yes, pretty much has to be.
Yeah, pretty much has to be.
One thing I'd like to add, I don't know if we, everybody's realized this or not. We could have as many as a hundred camp trailers within the next two years and maybe as many as two hundred homes being rebuilt. Something we've got to really fast track on getting these brewery camp trailers, get them, get them where they can get set up, permits and whatever it takes.
Absolutely.
Then there was one other thing on the agenda. Along Austin, the Harold Hills Memorial, we talked about that without consent. I'd like to move that to next month just because of time.
Hey Jim, real quick, Jim?
Yes.
Um, I have to ask you this because I have a hard time getting ahold of any of the counselors, but I'm, I'm working on two grants for the Mackey Creek watershed area. And I need to know if I can get signing authority or who has signing authority for the application. Because I'm going to need to submit that application real quick and I don't know who can sign for that or if I can get permission with, through a letter to sign for that.
We've had that conversation. It really has to be Kelly or I for the mayor. So, and, and I'm available. If I know something's been, for the USDA grant, I've already told them, I'll drive to Roseburg to sign it.
Yeah, yeah, it's a couple of different grants, but I've had a hard time trying to get ahold of you through your email. It's bouncing back, so I'm not sure.
It's on my cell.
Okay.
And if you have, you have that number?
I'm, I'm pretty sure my husband does.
Okay, yeah.
Or you can call me Michelle and I can always get ahold of Jim usually.
Okay.
Somehow.
I know something needs to be signed. It'll, it'll happen almost immediately.
Mayor Trent, we have Ken Woodward with the North Santiam Sewer Authority waiting.
Yeah, Ken, can you be real brief? Because we're, we're really.
I can be brief, brief, Jim, you know, you know me.
Yeah, I do.
Everybody, everybody that's listening, get your questions and answer, get your questions. We'll have the answers. But the middle of February, we're going to have a, a town hall. Shelley will inform everybody when it's going to be, but get ready. We need to hear from everybody. So I have a lot more, but right now, just get prepared.
Thank you. Counselor Shepherd, do you have a street report really briefly? We've asked for it, you weren't there. And he's still on it.
Greg, wake up.
You have a street report? I guess you can't hear us. Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn, Jim.
Counselor Page, adjourn second, Counselor Tezdale. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned at nine forty-two. Thank you all very much for your attention and go from there. Have a good rest.
For what you're doing, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome new counselors and planners and hang on, baby, we're going for a ride.
Amen.